أعوذ بالله من الشيطان الرجيم بسم الله الرحمن الرحيم وصلى الله على محمد وعلى آله الطاهرين اللهم صل على محمد وآله محمد وعجل فرجه Dear brothers and sisters, Assalamualaikum warahmatullah And welcome to the last session of our course from Ali عليه السلام to Al Mahdi عليه السلام It's been an amazing five weeks So many sessions with a lot of information Looking at the topic of Imamah and Ghaybah and Imam Mahdi From very different perspectives From an intellectual perspective, Quranic perspective Through the Ahadithes, from a historical perspective Looking at the theory, looking at the practical aspect And so it's been a lot of discussions so far And Alhamdulillah we've come really ahead in this discussion So, in this last session Where we want to bring everything back and bring it back to today So we started our journey from Imam Ali عليه السلام Which was over a thousand years ago Until today, the time of Imam Mahdi What we want to do is we want to reconcile everything And see where we stand today In terms of our madhab, the shayyou In terms of the knowledge that we have And linking this back to the system of wakalah That we discussed with Sheikh Miqdad in the previous session How is all of this relevant today? So for this very interesting discussion We have with us two of our important teachers in this course Sheikh Miqdad and Sheikh Qazim, Assalamualaikum
Waalaikumsalam warahmatullah
So thank you very much for joining us For last time in this course Insha Allah we'll be seeing you in many other courses On Bawrazza's platform But for this course, Insha Allah, this is the last session So let's get started So how about we start with Sheikh Miqdad? If you can take us back a little bit to the system of wakalah And link that to where we're starting today
أعوذ بالله من الشيطان الرجيم بسم الله الرحمن الرحيم الحمد لله رب العالمين وصلى الله على محمد وآله الطاهرين Allahu sallallahu ala Muhammad wa ali Muhammad Congratulations to all the viewers who have reached us until here Alhamdulillah it's been an amazing journey So just to begin, we talked about the system of wakalah And we said that how the Imam set up this system In order to make sure that the role that they had to perform Happens in the best of ways across the lands Basically where the Shia has now spread Come to the Ghaybah, the Sughra We said how this system is so strong by then We saw the graph yesterday By now we have reports of over forty wakalah Across the different regions And in some places the Shiites have gathered in such numbers Having formed centers of knowledge etcetera So things are working really well basically And those wakalah, those really high level scholars at that time Are really making sure that they bring the religion to the people They teach, they guide, they protect, they tarbiah etcetera So this is happening And as you move on away from Ghaybah, the Sughra slowly, slowly With the third and the fourth in the end As you mentioned yesterday, we don't have too much about the fourth one Because the system kind of is working You don't need to go back to that final point Which is the Naibah, Chahs of the Imam And we mentioned how the Imam then writes a letter to a Samuli Telling him that "Do not appoint anybody after you" Because the Ghaybah has now started Now, very importantly over here is that We now move to not a new system But kind of same system with kind of different differences, right? The first difference, the main one is there's no Wakil appointed
Appointed specifically by the Imam
Exactly The names in this are changing as well, right? So you don't use the term wakalah anymore so much Use term like Fukaha for example
Or Ulama basically
Or Ulama for example, right? The Gem of A'lem And then the words evolve as well So then you have a Mujtihad, then you have Maraji, right? Mujtihad was Tamu Sharait Which has all the Sharait of being an A'lem, a Faqih Who can be kind of the arm representative of the Imam
Obviously terminology such as Mujtihad and Maraji Are being used way later in history, right?
Yes, yeah, but just to show that it's kind of a change of name Because you don't want to kind of say that "Oh, I'm the Wakil Chahs of the Imam" We don't have that basically, we must be clear from the al-Habib But the role is the same, the system is the same Also another important point is that When the system of wakalah moves from Ghaybah, the Sughra to Ghaybah, the Kobra It's not like a very like "Okay, today the Ghaybah has happened and that's it" "Now we're a different world", right? No, it happened very, in a very fluent way, very fluid way, sorry
Basically the natural process, things changed naturally
Exactly, so during the time So Kulaini for example, right? Great scholar, is in the time of the Ghaybah, the Sughra, right? Sheikh Saduq's dad around the same area Companions like Safar, who writes Basar al-Darjam for example Is a companion of the 8th, 11th Imam, right? The 11th Imam And other companions that you have, the writing of books Books in Hadith, books in Fiqh and Usul, books in Aqaid They're all present during the time of the Imam From 6th Imam onwards, right? And we saw how sometimes the Imam would take these books And yesterday we mentioned how he would take the book Praze the book of Yunus Abdul Rahman Najafi later when he comes He gathers the list of all the scholars at that time of the Imam Who had books, right? Anyhow, what happens is that around the Ghaybah, the Sughra The main place where the scholars have gathered together is Ray So around Qum, around Tehran, sorry, center of Iran And the likes of Kulaini and his teachers are there Kulaini then compiles this very important book He has many books by the way But the only book that has reached us is his famous Al Kahfi Where he gathers all the narrations Which makes the first and primary book of the Kutubah Arbaat That is generally known in the science of Hadith Following that, then you have scholars, the likes of Saduq Allah have mercy on him And then moving on to Sheikh Mufid And then Sa'id Murtaza, Sa'id Rida, Sheikh Tusi So we find that what happens is that These two centers, Qum, right, Ray These centers on one side and then Baghdad as well, right? Following on, because the wakalah were there, right? The Naibah Chahs were there That place also forms a center of the Shia Hauza, the word Hauza itself literally means a center It means a place, right? So it's a place where people revolve around Because that's where the Ulama are, that's where the Fukaha are there, right? So this is where the Hauza really stems from basically Understanding that, okay, this role of the Imam Which was to guide and to preserve the Deen And with tarbiah happens, where we acquire our knowledge of the religion Basically it happens then in these centers Because these centers where the kind of the person, the Faqih is there So Mufid and then Sheikh Tusi, after that in Baghdad very strongly Sheikh Tusi obviously goes up until 5th century now, right? Before that remember, we talked about Baghdad and Ray and Qum But these are not the only centers There's Falah Musamir Khan in Uzbekistan, today Uzbekistan And other centers as well where the Fukaha are gathered Remember it's a system of network that gathers everyone across the lands, right? But anyhow, you have these centers where One place or two places at one era Becomes what is called the Hauza today Where the major Fukaha happen, are staying And that's what they're teach, they learn, their research happens, etcetera
So you have the Ulama who've spread across the whole Islamic areas But then you have certain pockets where A lot more Ulama have gathered together And that's sort of the training ground of the Ulama And they're spread from there
Naturally Sheikh Tusi is in Baghdad for example Everyone wants to come to Baghdad Not only the students, also both the people Because they want to be with the Maraji basically, the people Maraji itself, literally a Maraji is somebody whom
A source of reference, a person you refer to
Exactly, you go back to basically Anyhow, so when Sheikh Tusi passes away Sheikh Tusi, before he passes away, he moves to Najaf, right? Because of the attack that happens in Baghdad Tusi moves to Najaf And he sets up the Hauza kind of in Najaf So you can say the history of the Hauza of Najaf goes back to Tusi Towards the end of his years After Sheikh Tusi, you have a kind of a couple of decades Where that kind of grandness that Sheikh Tusi brought Basically is not matched by his students' story, story catching up Hauza Mustu Hilla, right? Another city where now you have the likes of Now we're in the 5th, 6th century, right? The likes of Muhakkik Hilly and Alama Hilly And all the big scholars who set up this kind of Hauza in Hilla Remember what we're trying to do over here I'm trying to show you that the system of wakalah That was happening under the guidance of the Imam directly Or indirectly to the wakalah Chahs, the Bab It kind of carries on, right? It's the same thing
And it naturally progresses into this kind of centers of the Ulama Who again are in contact with the people But basically they're not representing directly the Imam In a direct appointment sense
But they did the rules of the Imam
But the conditions that the Imams had mentioned, therefore filling those And I guess the Hauza is the place where They're trying to produce people who fit those criteria, right?
Exactly, right? So and the Hauza across the history moves From city to city depending on various circumstances One of them is a political circumstance, right? So we have authorities that come are very much against the Ulama Very much against Tashayou Sometimes you have political situation where they're very much pro-Tashayou, right? And so the Hauza takes a different face accordingly That's very beautiful, very important We come towards our close to home 6th, 7th century, so Bouali, Bouali Shayad Awal, Shaytani These are scholars of the 8th, 9th century So the likes of, we talked about Hilla before that So Shahr Ashob and Khajin Asrudin Tusi and Ibn Taawus These are all 6th, 7th century Move on to 8th, 9th century Shayad Awal etcetera And going really, really fast Come to 10th, 11th century, the Safawi period The famous Safawi period where you have now the Hauza moving to Isfahan The likes of Alama Majesty etcetera Just before that, a couple of centuries before that Ardabili, 7th, 6th, 8th century basically, takes it back to Najaf So you can say after Sheikh Tusi The second person who brought Hauza back to Najaf is Muhakkik Ardabili And following his students Shaytani and Sahib Ma'alem, Sahib Ma'alem etcetera Isfahan really, 10th, 11th century really picks up Because now the authorities are kind of with the scholars And so this really brings about this positive And opportunity for growth to happen And this is why the likes of Majesty really produced what he managed to produce I mean Majesty wouldn't have been able to produce That amazing work that he did in Bihar If it wasn't for the authority that he had He had money, he had access to things That's why by the way, Bihar is so important in many different ways, right? I mean unfortunately we had a lot of criticism towards Bihar It's very much unjust, I feel Yes, I'm not saying it's a perfect book There's obviously there's issues with the book in its own place But it's very unjust to
To sideline it basically
Exactly, Bihar, you know, Alaa Majesty had access to books That we don't have access to today, right? Alaa Majesty had access to manuscripts And he was very Daqiq, very precise in what manuscript And how to take from manuscripts So because of the power, authority and money that he had He had access to all these different resources That are not available to us right now And he brings all that into Bihar So Bihar is a very important book that happens During the 10th, 11th century with Majesty May Allah have mercy on him So Sheikh Bahai, Faiz Kashani etcetera Moving on to the 13th, 12th, 13th century
So as you mentioned, the political situation Had an impact in the Ulama moving and the centers moving as well, right?
Yeah
And it makes sense because if you have an opportunity To grow and to establish yourself And you have that peace and security that's allowing you to Make the guidance available for more people Then you would take that opportunity obviously, right?
Definitely
You don't miss out on that
Definitely, yeah And we'll talk about it just, we'll come close to home So Alaa Majesty, during that time as well There's also a scholar by the name of Astar Abadi who comes And there's a whole movement of Akbari that begins Which is a movement that is very quickly Kind of put aside by the likes of Wahid Bahbahani And then his students Baharul Om etcetera This is now end of the 12th century and beginning of 13th century
Could you give us some light on what is this Akbari movement And why it's come about?
So the Akbari movement influenced by different schools Now remember, sometimes it's also very important to do this Is to look at history, not just from one angle But to look at it from a general picture as well So if you look at Akbari movement that happens in the Middle East What happened in Europe is very important as well Because you can say that perhaps what happens in Europe With the Renaissance and that movement that happens The humanistic movement in Europe Kind of influences to some extent the Akbari movement over here So there's kind of links In any case, Akbari movement says that basically We need to go back to the Riwayat, to the Hadith And take only from the Riwayat Putting aside Aql, putting aside Usul Putting aside all sort of methodology to go back And just taking it kind of with a very, kind of blindly basically, right? Quits, this is very obviously, very summarized There's a lot to talk about in Akbaris When Wahid Bahbahani comes, really brings Usul back basically Brings back the, and slowly after him as well Brings back the importance of the Aql, the role of the intellect In understanding the Riwayat and putting the Riwayat together The whole discourse of Ishtarad basically, right? The Ishtarad being a very, very important foundation In how we deal with Islamic texts And to realize that this is not just for us to pick up a book of Hadith Unfortunately sometimes we find that "Oh, if I know Arabic, I can pick up a book of Hadith" "I know a bit of Rujal as well" "And I can just read Arabic and that's it, I've become a scholar" This is not the case, right? The millennium of scholarship that we have Showed us that you just can't do this In fact, there's a whole methodology to go about looking at the text The use of the Aql in the text etcetera
So Sheikh Qazim, the other day we were discussing about About this whole Akbari movement And the demographics of this movement So was it, if you can shed light on Was it something that the whole of mainstream Tashayou became Akbari? Or how was it? Can we say that mainstream Tashayou sort of went On a side path for a short amount of time before it came back?
So when it comes to Akbari movement As Sheikh Miqdad mentioned that We'll definitely need a lot more time To go through the history and the roots and the influences And that would be an interesting topping in itself But what allows us to say here is that It was a certain intellectual effort That came up with conclusions that were different From the mainstream views of the Shia Fukaha Basically the discussion was centered around certain important discussions Mainly to do with the methods employed In understanding the narrations and the Quran So basically the discussions mainly focus on Usulul Fiqh The principles of jurisprudence So there, likes of Amin Astar Abadi and after him Yusuf al-Bahrani And also a set of other scholars They came up with different conclusions from the mainstream So I'll put it like this, that it was an alternative opinion In the academic circles amongst the Shia scholars And I wouldn't say that the entire this, the Shia Fukaha And the line of Shia Fukaha that was going took Akbari turn But it was an important intellectual discussion And a very heated one as well, in the intellectual circles Of course, at times even having ramifications in the larger society Because that's what happens, that some of these discussions They have a spill over in the society So this was an important alternative opinion Which started finding followers in certain regions So for example, if you go and look at history For a period of time, the Hauza in Karbala was, you can say, heavily influenced And of course, we should be careful in using these terms When I'm saying influenced It's not about like someone trying to influence them It was an intellectual discussion New questions were brought forth Certain new ideas which are not common were brought forth And they become a matter of discussion Yusuf al-Bahrani from Bahrain, so for a period of time That area around Bahrain was under Akbari influence Which means that these ideas were kind of more accepted But when the mainstream Shia Ulama Or who were the senior Fukah at that time They saw that intellectually the ideas Which were proposed in terms of the methods of understanding Quran And Hadith and role of intellect and that Did not stand on solid foundations and proofs They came and they heavily criticized it So one of the big services that Sheikh Wahid Bahbahani did Was that he came and he wrote books Answering all those things, the new ideas that were brought forth And this is how the Hauza has always been That it's open to new ideas, to alternative ideas But that person who's bringing a new idea Should come with a very, very solid proof and justification for it And if there's not enough solid proof There'll be other scholars who will feel responsible They'll criticize it And they would come to this conclusion, for example, in case of Akbarism That for example, these four of their ideas are not correct They're not in line with the understanding of the Quran Of the Hadith, of the intellect And what eventually happened is that with these kind of responses And the peak of these responses come with Sheikh Ansari So he's that Marja And the senior most Faqih of his time who comes And in his book which is Faraidul Usul Famously known as Rasail, those who have studied Hauza they know He comes and in the relevant discussion He spends a lot of time bringing the questions brought forth By these Akbari scholars and he answers these questions And it's kind of, you can say that after Sheikh Ansari The Akbari ideas were
Sort of died down basically
Died down and the reason why they died down Was that intellectual answers were given And this is how it happens, right? That in academic circles You have to convince that set of students It's not a question of who has more, for example, public support Or more authority in that sense
And it's also not about just having opinions for the sake of having opinions, right? Variety of opinion is because a person strongly feels this is true But if it's very clear that this opinion now All its stances have been countered with sound argument Then there's no point having
Yeah, and of course it would be interesting To go through some of the examples and what the answers were given But of course, it's not the right time for that But I think this would give a slight idea of how You can say that it was an important alternative opinion at that time The scholars that came, the Usuli scholars you would say Because these are two camps, they gave the answers And you can say that after Sheikh Ansari and his students onwards These ideas did not have any important relevance in the Hauza And that holds true even till today
Asantum, thank you so much So should we go back to going through the history? So we've come to the Akbari movement that sort of died down
So as Sheikh pointed very nicely So Sheikh Ansari really brings the Usuli movement back strongly And this happens in Najaf, 13th century And then carries on, so now Najaf has become the center The main Hauza, even before him, as Ardabili brought it and slowly grew Sheikh Ansari, then the likes of, you can say that After this, you find this, or around this area, Baharul Om onwards You find this, like you can say, like all the stars have gathered In this beautiful place called Najaf Where now the scholars, I mean you would love to live in those days, right? Where you had likes of Sheikh Ansari and Mirza Burzok So Muhammad Sanshirazi and then Aakhond And then Mahmoud Abdul Karim Haeri and Naini And Abdul Hassan Issohani and these giants So what did they do for Tashayou, it's just amazing, right? In the 14th century, so Abdul Karim Haeri moves to Qum And he kind of brings the Hauza of Qum back to life And after him, the likes of Aythar Abu Mujarri And then Imam Khumini And setting up the Hauza primarily And then what happens is 1979 happens And Imam Khumini does what he did In really setting up a new page in history, right? Now we turn the page of history and you realize that something new has happened That we haven't really seen before Where by now, the authority belongs to a Faqih, a Marja, right? Where he has all the Sharait, right? To be that name under those criteria that Imam was talking about And this brings about that amazing blessings in the Hauza Where now the Hauza just flourishes because your opportunity is there Not just to focus on certain areas But now to really look at beyond everything we were just looking at in those areas But looking at society, looking at the highest level of achievement That a society can achieve together Under the leadership of a Faqih, of a Marja
And I guess a lot of the discussions, a lot of things that were not discussed before Are now discussed because now they have relevance, right?
Exactly
So before we did not have a government We didn't have, we didn't need to have an economic system, a political system I don't know, different, different education system So the discussion would not have been very heated and relevant in the Hauzas But now, after the revolution, now that there's a need for an Islamic system I guess the Ulama have to now come up with an answer, right? What is the Islamic perspective on these things? So that makes it flourish But also there's the aspect of that security now That pressure that we're talking about The Imams were under of the Zalimeen And then later on even the other Ulama always under, you know, always the minority Now that they've got that security and that peace And they're the majority, they're able to do their work and expand now
The likes of Hussain in the Ruhr had to hide that the Shiites, being the Naib Look at the days today, right now, we can write books We can have seminars, we can have massive conferences, right? The way the knowledge has progressed in these last 14 years It's amazing and all of it is because of this setup That was kind of a dream of the system, yeah
Asantum, brilliant, so that brings us to today's Hauza So let's move on to understanding what today's Hauza is about Like what's happening in the Hauza A lot of the brothers and sisters have these questions, I believe And we've discussed it with people before as well On a one-to-one basis, that you know, what do you guys do in the Hauza? I mean, what do you study? Why does it take so long? You know, does Islam and does the Hauza and the Ulama Have answers to the different, different issues that happen in society? So Sheikh Qazim, if you can start and give us a slight insight into the Hauza And what it's doing today
Okay, so definitely it's a very important topic Talking about Hauza and its role and its position today And Sheikh Miqdad very, very nicely and briefly mentioned That Hauza is not an institution that, for example Was set up maybe few decades ago or few hundred years ago It's a continuous tradition that has continued From the time of the Imams into Ghaybah, the Sughra, into Ghaybah, the Kobra And it's a continuous chain which has produced a lot of Barakah and a lot of fruit So I would even call this is one of the examples of that Shajaratun Tayyiba Which Allah has mentioned in the Quran It's that blessed tree that bears its fruit in every season, in every time And really, I mean, I feel like saying this That it would be really interesting to go even to the details of this history So Sheikh Miqdad just mentioned in like few minutes And I'm sure like you're feeling that like how much you had to summarize Just mention a few names, do you get an idea? Otherwise if we come to discussing this topic of the history of the Hauza These big scholars that names came up It's a world in itself and it's really, really interesting
Imagine what's gonna happen to the recap of this recap
I can imagine, I think you'd just be able to mention the name Hauza That Hauza has a history, okay? They won't go beyond that So it would be really interesting to look into it But let's talk about the Hauza today And of course, there's so many things that you have to talk And we can talk about the Hauza and we'll go into the different details I'll just begin by saying that Because this is a course and discussion on Imamah And this is the last session So basically I'll also try and would want to put things in perspective That what the Hauza has been doing historically And even is doing today and will keep doing is It's kind of performing that role That was assigned to the Shia during the Ghaybah of helping the Imam So I'll put it under that paradigm To just make it very clear that the entire Hauza All the scholars, all the students who are being trained here Who go through this amazing process of learning And we'll speak about the details That how amazing and how fulfilling this place is Their purpose is one to be at the service of Imam Al Nahdi So and even making it more specific I would say that basically the entire aim of the Hauza Is to fulfill the duty of that system of wakalah and representatives And in the times of Ghaybah, its sole aim and its ultimate aim Is to prepare the grounds for His coming Because that's the important thing Because that's the main thing we are missing today As the Shiites, as the Muslim Ummah and as the humanity That our master, our leader who can take us to Those avenues of perfection about which we have no idea I mean sometimes it's even difficult to imagine What blessing and Barakah Imam of the time would bring for the world So basically everything is geared towards being at His service And fulfilling those duties and helping Him Every single place that in this context of Hauza And being a scholar and doing Tabliq requires
So if we can say that despite the fact that we have a strong establishment Where we're producing, where we're training scholars And we have this sort of Ulama that sort of helped fulfill the role That the Imam has given us of guidance But there's still that big gap and that is the absence of the Imam So we can't just, you know, get laid back and say we don't need the Imam now We're, you know, we're ourselves, we're okay We still need the Imam and there's a lot more And you know, there's a lot of things we don't know There's differences of opinions and all that That can all, a lot of them can be solved with the presence of that Imam
Definitely, and you can say that all the efforts Are and should be geared towards thinking about Him And thinking about bringing Him back Be it Hauza, be it the different Shia communities around the world Be it the Muslim Ummah So the entire effort should be focused on this very important thing That we are missing today We don't have that only connection between us and Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala We don't have that full access to Him, so that's important So I'll just begin by saying this and then we can go into the different things That if you want to summarize that what's the goal of the Hauza What are the different things that it does? What's its function? So I'll summarize it in these three general categories And of course, we can go in the detail and talk about it So one of the important duties of Hauza And the role it has to play today and even in the past Is to explain religion accurately So that's one of the pursuits and a very important pursuit Across all different subjects that are there to do with Islam So be it Aqaid and things to do with ideology and theology Be it regarding Aklak and the practical things that we need Be it Ahkam, those very important red lines that Allah has put The Wajib and the Haram So basically the Hauza is there to give us a very, very precise, accurate understanding Based on very strong methods And present to us that correct picture of Islam So that's one thing that is what Hauza is for And what it means, the relevance it has today The second thing, a general category that I would open As the role of the Hauza
The second thing, a general category that I would open uh as the role of the Hawsa is to uh. Produce Islamic solutions for people's needs. And uh this brings us to this very important and dynamic aspect of the Hawsa where. Uh based on the current needs, and again, you can trace it through the history, that different times, different needs, different situations. How the scholars and the Ulama uh dealt with these challenges. Uh in the sense that they provided solutions that were needed for that time. And in today's society, uh the needs. And the solutions that we need generally as Shias, as Muslims, uh they are of a very complex nature. Because the society has changed, especially uh keeping in mind the context of the modern world. So the Hawsa is there and one of the. Uh goals and the aims it has is to provide those solutions for people's lives. And I'm keeping it very general because. It has very many different forms in which it tries to answer uh the questions and the needs of the people. Take right from. Uh training a a Moballik who goes and takes charge of a a of a small place, for example, and trying to answer people's needs. To taking it to a very high level of, for example, running a government and answering those intellectual needs uh of a government. So that's the second thing. I'll just mention the third one and then we can continue the discussion. The third area which Hawsa. Uh takes it as its responsibility is to defend the religion. And and i- i- if you remember that one of the discussions that came, that one of the duties of the Imam was to. Explain and defend the religion. So the first thing I mentioned was that, explaining the religion. The third thing I'm mentioning is that. Uh in every day and age, there are different questions and doubts of intellectual nature of different uh. Types that come about religion. So one of the important duties that Hawsa has is to safeguard and. Uh basically, uh defend those uh uh Islamic teachings uh in all different forms. And in all different settings. So today, in today's time, for example, you'd have questions. Uh that come about about Islam, for example, because of some advances in modern sciences, for example. So. These question would be thrown at the Hawsa and many times the Hawsa proactively looks for these questions. So. For example, they'll go, they'll translate books, they'll look at what different people are saying. Of course, in areas relevant to their area of study.
The Hawsa is aware of what's happening in the modern world in in academic circles?
Yeah, so uh I would say that in in those topics that. Uh there is, for example, a new thing being said, for example, in the setting of the modern world. And these new ideas have some uh some intersection with the Hawsa or it's somehow impacting people's lives. Hawsa takes an active interest and it goes through very many different things uh that are there too. So I mean, just to give an example. I mean, this is just examples, I can bring many, many books. So this is a book uh about uh. So this from Ayatollah Miskwah, yes, so this is a book about philosophy of ethics. So if you see traditionally, for example, in the Hawsa, maybe like hundred years ago, you would never see a book written on this topic. Called Philosophy of Ethics, or if you want to call it uh in Arabic, Falsafatul Aklak, in Farsi they call Falsafe Aklak. Uh what was the reason? Because these are the questions regarding foundations of Aklak, foundations of ethics. So hundred years ago, five hundred years ago, the scholars would have the answers to some of these foundational matters regarding ethics, but.
There wouldn't be any uh a specific science.
Specific science where questions are there, it wasn't systemized at that time. And basically, uh even I would say this, that. Uh Hawsa also has this uh attitude of being very practical. So if you see that this thing is not really a question or a doubt for the people. And we have enough avenues to give them the guidance that they need, then there's no need of creating new doubts. So that's the thing. But now because philosophy of ethics is a is a field where hundreds of books are written in academia, in the Western world. You just go and search online, there are, I'm I'm saying hundreds, maybe even more than a thousand books. Being written on this topic and there are different ideas, different theories in philosophy of ethics. So the scholars felt the need and. For example, he writes this book and he'll go through the most popular uh opinions in philosophy of ethics in the. Academic circles, for example. So he'll bring different opinions about.
Sometimes explain them better, right? Because we had this about Sheikh Mutahiri as well, who says that, I think there was a a Marxist who came to him and said that. Correct me, right? And it says like, the way Sheikh Mutahiri explains Marxism, like we did, he did better than what we do.
And but it uh this this thing, so it happened, but it turned out to be something in uh. Didn't turn out to be in favor because he explained it so well, then when he started criticizing it. Uh he he went through the foundations and he gave a very, very strong, it's recorded, I mean, it's even turned into books that his answers to the Marxist. Idea. So uh this is the idea and I would say this is also an important area where Hawsa would even proactively take a lot of interest.
I mean, it's important for 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 us to first understand what the opinion is and then be able to criticize it. So. This shows that the Ulama are aware of what's happening, are able to even um um explain it themselves. Before being able to answer it.
To give another example is the example of music, when it comes to At-Tulah Khamenei, you have experts in music. Who, when they hear the analysis of At-Tulah Khamenei in the field of music, I mean, they themselves say that, no, I don't know. Forget the time and everything, but where do you get the expertise in this? I mean, you have books like uh this one that was recently published a couple of years ago, which is. A collection of his Darshaharaj. So we'll talk about what Darshaharaj means. But this is At-Tulah Khamenei's Darshaharaj on music, right? Where he analyzes music. Uh from a Fiqh perspective, but before doing that, obviously, he has to have the knowledge of what music is, what are the different types of music. Music in history, what was the kind of music that was played at the time of the Imams and the Ahlubit, what is singing? Um how the different sing songs uh go through history and the change that happened, to to come and have an opinion on it. Um in in today's world, basically. And really, it shows how our scholars um are are aware um in in very much details about. The different theories and different ideas out there. And but in, as Sheikh Qadim mentioned, all of this is to bring it back. Um to analyze it from a Islamic perspective, to give the answer what Islam says about this.
Now, what I find very interesting, this uh this book on Darshaharaj of music, this was something he's taught recently, is that correct?
Yes.
It's very interesting how a scholar, uh he's at the head of of a whole state and he's busy with his affairs. But that continuous uh academic effort and uh intellectual effort in teaching hasn't stopped. This is really amazing.
Yeah. So there's something interesting. So once we are with one of our teachers and this discussion came up that. We're studying these sciences and Darshaharaj and and it becomes very heavy, it's intellectually, it's quite challenging. So one of the students, he asked the question that uh how long are we supposed to study? Like, is there a time when we'll stop and then. We go in the field, in the society to do Khidmat. So he turns around and he quotes Ayatollah Khamenei. That he said in one of the gatherings, he's quoting from one of his teachers, that uh. It's a pursuit that has to continue till end of our life. So, for example, he also mentioned. Uh quoting Ayatollah Shabzindada, one of the senior figures here in Iran, that uh he himself. Has weekly sessions with some of the top Ulama and he also mentioned the names, uh discussing these uh very intellectual.
Contemporary issues.
Contemporary issues. Uh because this is amazing, right, that the the Shia scholars realize that. This is the foundation. If you don't have that accurate knowledge, uh then how are you going to answer the needs of the society? Yes, running the society, running the government is very important. Uh it takes a lot of his time, but despite that, he's made sure that he still continues with his Darshaharaj. He's writing these, uh he's giving this Darshaharaj, which are then turned into books. And also he has a weekly uh uh like a discussion session. So they take a a topic, a contemporary topic, and they bring the narrations and the verses and have a discussion, so.
This is my comment as well, because they say about um so the new topics for medicine and those kind of things. Find there's there's a lot of these Maraja, they have sessions called uh Jalla Seifta, where they get together with all the senior students. Um a- as well as experts basically in the field. So whatever, they said, the Ahkam of abortion, for example, say. So they'll bring all the doctors together and have these discussions together. And so very like um. Uh atmosphere of growth and research and producing things of what is a need of the people.
So so it's very interesting. So like you said, the the studies never end, but obviously that doesn't mean that we don't serve the community, we don't go back to our communities. It's like the the, it's a personal pursuit of of knowledge that just continues, but then at the same time, we're sort of serving the people and. It re- it takes me back to the Wukala. The Wukala were scholars who are pious, but also had this responsibility. Of managing, of, you know, collecting funds, of being with the people, guiding them, protecting the deen, uh um you know, debating. So it's a whole, it's a whole uh. A full-time thing, basically.
So just to complete this, I would say that so basically if someone wants to get a very brief idea of Hawsa life. So basically, you'd 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 say that it's in two phases. So there's a learning phase that happens in Hawsa and when a scholar is being trained. So there automatically, uh in the initial years, it's like hundred percent focus on studies. Then the student reaches a certain stage where now slowly and gradually now he starts contributing to the society, going out amongst the people.
At a very basic level.
A basic level. And then as these, uh the study period continues, the percentage of time, for example, a student would spend in Tabliq increases. So. It might even reach a place where it becomes like seventy thirty. Uh but a stage comes where now this scholar, this Alim decides that now it's my time to go. Uh like all out and full-time into the society. But even then, what full-time means is that now the balance is going to be flipped. So for example, he'll spend seventy, eighty percent of his time doing Khidmat, serving the society, serving the people, serving the Imam of the time. Doing whatever duty he needs to do, but yet that twenty, thirty percent continues as his his own intellectual pursuit and his research. That he needs to do in order to answer different questions at a time.
Now, to get a bit more insight into what we do, what is Darshaharaj and what we study, uh let me ask by saying this, because what you've said right now um. Is is a bit different to how the Hawsa is portrayed by uh what we might hear, for example, sometimes. So um not a long time back, for example, there was. Uh uh this idea that was that was uh said by by some speakers that, for example, in the Hawsa, we we learn very old things, right, that are not relevant. For example, uh this famous book Makasib starts with uh learning about uh um selling Najis items. Right? And one of the first few Najis items, something that's completely irrelevant to us in today's life. So why are we still studying these things in the Hawsa? What's the point of studying those things? Why not just study these contemporary issues? Why are we studying things that are irrelevant to us right now? So maybe Sheikh McDat, if you can give us an insight on this.
So this, I'm not sure what to say to you for this. Um it's such an innocent way, naive way of looking at things, you know? Um you see, the on one aspect, obviously, is um to to look at methodologies, right? When you look at um the, for example, the examples you mentioned, right, selling Najis things, you don't sta- study Makasib and the selling of Najis things. To be able to go to the member tomorrow and say, oh, by the way, people, um you can't be selling Najis things. That's not, that's not how it works, right? The reason why we're studying Makasib and studying of this thing is the entire understanding and the development of the ability to do Ishtar. Right? Whereafter, how did Sheikh Ansari, the great Sheikh Ansari, be able to derive this particular law, okay? From the sources that 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 are available, right? And I learned this methodology from him.
So it's basically we're using a topic but to learn his methodology.
Exactly.
And how he, the process he used.
Exactly. And this is just a part of the growth and part of my development as me becoming an expert in Islamic sciences, right? Somebody who doesn't go through this, someone who's like, you know what, I can know Arabic, I'll just pick up the Hadith book. The result that comes from such a person is extremely immature, right? Because he's just basing on uh kind of his own understanding and his own very weak. Ability to derive information from primary sources. Whilst if you go through his process of looking at um what Sheikh Ansari did and. What Aakhon Khurasani does and what all the different scholars from, in all the different fields as well, not just Fiqh and Usul, but also Tafsir, for example, that's why you look at the old Tafsir. As well the new Tafsir. In philosophy, same thing as well, you go to Alman Tabata, but then you look at Sheikh Ishrak and you look at uh the books of Bou Ali, et cetera. What you learn is the ability to, um that that methodology to understand Islam, where it came from.
There's a wealth of knowledge that they have, a sort of um a thinking process that they've had, that made them who they were. And so we're sort of building on that. I think something you had mentioned.
So my teacher has a very beautiful analogy, I, this sticks to my mind. Um he says, basically, we are climbing on the shoulders of the Qudama and looking ahead. Right? So you have to, you you're standing on the mountain of this amazing mountain of scholars, right, of the millennium that came. So you stand on their shoulder, but where do you look? You look ahead for the problems of tomorrow, basically.
Asantum. So it makes sense that um a student who is training himself and trying to learn and uh. Um the process and the methodology of extracting knowledge from the Quran and Hadith would have to start from topics that have already been worked on very well. Once he's got those uh skills, then he can look into newer topics and apply these skills on the newer topics. So uh Sheikh Qadim, can you give an insight into the different Darshaharaj? What is Darshaharaj in the first place and um um. What 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 kind of topics are being discussed in in those circles?
So um Darshaharaj would be would be said to be the highest level of studies that happens in the Hawsa. So basically, the way it's 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 designed, the curriculum that's here and uh although it's. Very similar across different Hawsas around the world, because we should also note this, that uh Qum is uh the. Hawsa today, that's probably the biggest Hawsa in terms of this number and size. Uh but we also have very active Hawsas, Hawsa of Najaf is active. Although I'll just go back to the same idea that uh because the authority there, Saddam Hussein was against the Hawsa. He was countering the Hawsa, how much that Hawsa had to suffer. And that Hawsa of Najaf that had such strength. Because of the the violence that was uh carried out against the Hawsa, the number of scholars that were killed by Saddam Hussein. Uh that led to a a big shaking in in the Hawsa of Najaf. Uh but now, with change in situation, it's it's coming back. And uh that also is an important center. And again, we have Hawsas uh across the world. So you have in Karbala, in Mashhad. Uh for example, if you look in other countries, uh Lebanon has a has a has a good Hawsa, if you go in the subcontinent, India, Pakistan, so. Uh it it's not something which is only in these big centers. Uh no, across the Shia world, this idea of having. Uh Hawsa and training scholars has always been there. So uh so this curriculum uh that is there is divided into three stages. Uh first, they call as the preliminaries, so the Mukaddimat. So there's a whole set of things that's studied there. Uh then you have the intermediary stage, which is called the Sutuh. Uh so the. Uh I'm just explaining the standard uh the program that's here and there are variations.
And on average, how much, how long?
Yeah, so with the way it's designed right now, the Mukaddamat uh in Hawsa of Qum and generally across Iran, it takes six years. So the Mukaddamat and there's a whole load of subjects that are studied there. Uh so there's a lot to be studied. So basically, those six years are those foundations. That are being built. And one of the differences, and I would like to say this here, that one of the differences uh in a way between university education and Hawsa. Lies here, that in the initial stage in Hawsa, a scholar, a student is expected to learn a wide range of subjects. So he's building that broad base where he needs to have a certain level of understanding of a lot of subjects. So. Uh it's not something where you say that, okay, I'm going to study for one year and I'm going to specialize. Uh it doesn't work like that. The system is is in a way that there's a range of Islamic subjects that I need to study to a certain level. And that's like the foundation. And then when you go to Sutuh, which is the second level, the intermediary level, that takes uh four years. So that's six plus four, ten. And then the eleventh year onwards, uh it's the Darshaharaj or the research level, if you would. Like to call it.
So this this uh uh this um comparison you made with the university, in this sense, I would I would think is a little bit unfair because. University uh level uh education stands on twelve years of schooling before that. So in reality, a person who's in university is relying on knowledge he's got in college and in high school and even in primary. Whereas Islamic studies have not been done for this person. So it's sort of like he's starting, uh in one way, sort of he's starting this journey from scratch.
So I think you made a very, very fair point and uh but I I was trying to say that uh sometimes the idea people have is that. Uh before coming to Hawsa, people know a lot, so let's just start with specialization. No, it's not like that. So. If you want to make an analogy, you'll have this idea that, look, people who go to universities, they have twelve years of schooling and they. Uh study a wide range of subjects. So that's their base and then they build on that. So in that sense, it's it's similar. So yeah, that's that's a very important point.
The Sutuh would be what's equivalent to, for example, a a bachelor's degree. And what would be equivalent to master's, PhD would be the Darshaharaj.
And it has happened. So for example, the foreign students who study here uh in Qum, what they have done is that same system, they're trying to make it. Equivalent of a of a of a university system. So they've divided these stages into bachelor's degree, master's degree and a PhD. And of course, it also gives them a university degree. Uh but the core of the studies is uh the uh what the Hawsa, the different subjects that are taught are. And of course, it's a whole long story. So. There are things that we generally need to know as a scholar and uh and of course, a time comes where people can specialize and and. Go into different streams and different specific topics where they can focus their energies, researching, studying more about that topic.
Asantum. So let's go into Darshaharaj before we take a quick break. Um yeah, so let's just. Yeah, talk about Darshaharaj. What is Darshaharaj? What like, what's this research and what kind of subjects are discussed?
Okay, so traditionally Darshaharaj uh and this idea was basically, it's called Darshaharaj because. It's not based on a text. So basically, the idea is Haraj al-Kittab. So before Darshaharaj, because it's uh. Uh you're studying still. It's, you can say, it's a pre-research, it's educational stage, you're learning that.
You have textbooks, basically, and this is a textbook.
Exactly. Of course, uh when I say textbook, it doesn't mean that it's completely tied to the textbook. Of course, there's a lot of room for creativity changes. And it depends on the teachers that, how they approach it. But as as it is common every day, eh everywhere around the world, universities usually for these. But as as it is common every day, e- everywhere around the world, universities, usually for these kind of topics, you have certain textbooks. And many times for one subject, you might have three, four textbooks that you can choose from. But we eventually know that it's not a research stage, it's not something that's going to go beyond this book a lot. So there is that focus on that book. So uh in Dar's Akhara, what happens is that that you have this uh expert in that field. Uh right now, I'm trying to define Dar's Akhara in a very broad sense that it includes, it can include all possible topics. So I would even say, uh you can have, uh uh you can call a certain Dar's in philosophy as Dar's Akhara. So basically, what happens is that you have this senior teacher, expert in a certain field related to Houser. He comes and he presents his research. So he's teaching what he has researched based on the methodology that's supposed to be used in that topic. For example, it's philosophy, it will be based on intellectual arguments. For example, it's a discussion on Fiqh, it's heavily based on the narrations. And each of these two streams, and I would even say this, that these are the general two, if you want to categorize different subjects you have in Houser. A a a set of topics are, you can say, based on uh intellect, intellectual methodology. So things like philosophy, even things, for example, I mentioned, like philosophy of ethics. A lot of the discussions there are intellectual, you're analyzing different things. But a good number of things that are studied in Houser are based on uh scriptural sources, Quran and Hadith and even history at times. So the methodology becomes very, very different. So we have these main two methodologies. So this person who's expert, who's mastered these methodologies, has written a lot of books, he's taught for many years. Now he comes and presents his research. And there are students there who have studied these topics before, but they have never uh studied them at the research level. So basically, you'll have this person, he'll bring an issue to be discussed. For example, the same thing that came up, so something regarding buying and selling of a certain item. Okay, so so this Fakhi, for example, in the field of Fiqh, will bring this topic. He'll say that, okay, let's bring all the different narrations versus of the Quran, using that accurate methodology that's there. The foundations which he had built in the principles of jurisprudence, he'll apply it, he'll go through a whole discussion. And a lot of the things would come here. For example, opinion of different scholars would come. Their arguments would come, criticism of their arguments would come. And then eventually, this Fakhi, this expert, is going to give his conclusion, his expert opinion on this topic. So what it means for the students, so this is from the side of the teacher, that it's a place for him to present his research. From the side of the students, it's their first experience into research. First experience where they're cut off from a book and they're listening to a top-notch expert. Who's bringing all different opinions on the topic and eventually this uh teacher might refer to seven, eight, ten different books. So for the students, it's their first taste of research, first taste of seeing that how Ijtihad happens. Not only to see, be part of the process by criticizing the teacher. So this is a a very common scene, you go and look at Dar's Akhara, it's like, uh so he's presenting this teacher. And someone starts doing this called Ishqal, like he has a something to say, a criticism that he has. And and the discussion continues, so.
It's it's very amazing because sometimes there's gatherings of like, when Atul Jawadi, for example, has like thousands of people, right? And the voice just comes from any, you don't you don't know where, like, I'm sure the teacher doesn't know where this guy, voice is coming from. There's one voice comes and said, like, I have a, I have a question over here, I have a Ishqal over here, he said.
And it's happened to me many times, so we would be in Dar's Akhara in Faisya, so teacher would be teaching a certain thing, I would have a question. And you just start saying that, uh sorry, I need to ask you this. And of course, you have to sometimes shout a bit because it's a huge classroom. And maybe like this, Dar's Akhara, there are like more than hundred students. Uh so you just shout, you shout in the sense you to speak loudly so that uh he can hear and then he would hear me carefully and then he would answer. And sometimes it would be a dialogue, so it would enter into a discussion. So the interesting stories about this, so it's 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 mentioned that sometimes uh Shahid Bakr al-Sad. And he was very young, so probably he was seventeen, eighteen, and he already had reached the stage of Ijtihad. So it's said that at the age of nineteen, he got a written permission of Ijtihad from Sayed al-Khoi. So it's mentioned that sometimes in Dar's Akhara, when uh this young, Sayed Muhammad Bakr al-Sad would be there. They would have ten exchanges of question, answer, question, answer. So imagine Sayed al-Khoi with that command he had over both Usul and Fiqh. And he's like the mager of his time, he's presenting his research. And you have this young nineteen-year-old, uh like, looks like a young boy, uh asking questions. And they would have these like seven, eight times. He would answer, he would ask a question, he would answer it, ask a related question and they would have these.
That's really amazing. It shows the humility as well, that the senior scholar over there is being challenged by a young, a young boy, basically, right? Nineteen-year-old, he's still very young and he's happy to.
And what's amazing is that uh a point came where Sayed al-Khoi uh told this young Muhammad al-Baqir that. Uh you don't need to attend my Dar's anymore, you you're fine now. So and it's amazing, right? So it's said about Shahid al-Sadr that he was twenty-nine. Uh when he started giving Dar's Akhara. So that's another level, right? One is that you complete uh this level of Dar's Akhara and if someone completes, technically, you would call him a Muchtaheb. He's reached that level of Ijtihad, but of course.
And now he's able to contribute back to the.
Yeah, but even in small amounts, very little, so it's like if you want to compare with university, it's like uh you complete your PhD. You're yet a research fellow. I mean, it's not like automatically you complete your PhD, now you are a full professor. No, that this doesn't work like that. So those who are aware of these university levels, they would know that. Starting from a research fellow to different levels of professorship that are there. And a good number of people don't even reach a full tenure of professorship. It takes years and years of contribution in that field, original research, it has to be acknowledged by other researchers. Uh so uh uh very similar things. I mean, the names might not be there, but the concept is similar. So Shahid Saad, for example, from the age of nineteen to twenty-nine, had to contribute so much. That he could reach a place where now he would give a Dar's Akhara that would be accepted in in that uh where the heavyweights in Najaf. So Najaf wasn't a small place. Uh it's not easy, like someone just randomly pops up and starts giving Dar's Akhara. And eh and everyone would accept it. So he started at that time and Dar's Akhara was accepted, that, yeah, he has that level. So these exchanges are really, really important and beautiful and this is how, a very, very brief idea of how Dar's Akhara would work.
And Dar's Akhara, I guess, is that level where now there's no end, you just continue it to a research station. That's why when you say that uh our studies don't end, basically, this is the research day that doesn't end.
Okay, so uh I think I would just uh uh try and even uh uh like add a bit more and correct this perception. There's two ways of understanding this, that sometimes you say that Dar's Akhara never ends. So sometimes it means that, oh, what does it mean? Like, uh you just keep going on, uh doesn't make sense. No, there's a right meaning to it. So what it means is, as you said, that uh Dar's Akhara. You attend a certain number of years and now in recent times in Houser of Qum, this is being systemized. So that's the difference. So for example, fifty years ago, Dar's Akhara wouldn't be so systemized. It would be left on the student to pursue Dar's Akhara, reach a stage where he now he knows that I'm a Muchtaheb. Either get a written Ijazah from the teacher or uh have other ways of knowing that he's reached the station of Ijtihad. And then he wouldn't need to continue Dar's Akhara. It wasn't so properly systemized. So some people would take five years, some people would take seven years, some people would take longer.
Depending on how much effort.
Effort that. But now it's being systemized. So you have these, so there's this idea in Qum, there are close to ten of these. Uh uh institutes that specialize in Fiqh, in jurisprudence. And what they've done is that they take students at a higher level. So many of them even take students starting from Kharej. So they say, do your other studies before. When you're starting Dar's Akhara, come here. We have, for example, a six-year program, a five-year program. Okay, where we'll put you through the Dar's Akhara in a systematic manner. And if you study well and fulfill all the requirements, we can guarantee that after these six years or the the prescribed number of years. You'd reach that basic minimum stage of Ijtihad. So yes, after that, as we, you mentioned that Dar's Akhara continues means that his research has to continue. Because now uh he's completed his PhD, he has that degree of Ijtihad, for example, he's expert. And now he is to now start working on the different topics and it can take very many different forms. So for some, it's about going and teaching again these topics. For some, it's about sitting in their room and doing research on these topics and presenting papers.
Hmm.
For some, it's even uh other different things. So in some of these topics, it even comes to.
For example, it's when it comes over here, being a judge, for example.
Yeah.
Being part of the political system, for example. It's different, different thing, being part of um advisory and counseling. So we have a lot of uh these students that go into counseling, for example. To solve marriage issues, child upbringing, et cetera. Going to the field of cinema and um 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 creating like animations and that kind of stuff because it requires a a scholar's view as well to that as well. So different places where you can.
Yeah, exactly. So this is that, there are many practical roles also. And they would continue their academic pursuit, fulfilling these roles. So I think we should have this uh like an a slightly more accurate idea of that. Dar's Akhara continues doesn't mean that it's a pursuit which uh never ends and you don't reach any solid conclusion. And alhamdulillah, now we have uh attempts where it's being like formalized, there's a timeframe to it, there's a a system being put to that. So that we can achieve concrete results from uh these academic pursuits.
So uh let's take a quick break and then Insha Allah, after the break, uh I just want to discuss this uh thing you mentioned, you talked about. Uh you know, being a judge and you know, um cinema uh and um Tarbiat of of children. What has this got to do with Fiqh? Because Dar's Akhara is usually to do with uh Fiqh, at least in the uh in the textual sciences, right? So what has this to do with Fiqh? Uh Insha Allah, we can start discussing that after a short break. So brothers and sisters, um Insha Allah, we'll be back in a few moments, let's take a bit of refreshments. And uh be ready for uh another uh second part with more energy, Insha Allah. Bismillahir Rahmanir Rahman, brothers and sisters, Assalamualaikum and welcome back to the session. Uh the last session of our course from Ali alaihis salam to Al-Mahdi alaihis salam. So we're discussing about uh the Houser and the progress uh we've had in terms of training Islamic uh scholars. Uh and this whole idea of continuing the the legacy that started uh from the time of the Imams into Haba the Suhra and into Haba the Kobra. So before the 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 break, we were discussing with uh two uh teachers, Sheikh Midad and Sheikh Kazim, uh about what the Houser is about. And Sheikh Midad, you you mentioned uh the fact that um you know, there's this, I uh there's studies on on, you know, cinema and Tarbiat. And and this kind of s- um of subjects. Now, this is something we haven't really, really heard much about. Um um where does this, the Houser uh stand in terms of these kind of topics?
Before I go on um to that, um Aythul Arafi, so Aythul Arafi is the head of the Houser currently, the Houser Ilmiah of Iran. Uh amazing personality, may Allah protect him and grant him strength upon strength, Insha Allah. So he mentioned in two, about two, two years ago, that there is a hundred thousand students, Tullah, in Iran, studying within the Houser. Um which is massive, right? Um and. These are in, these are obviously spread out. You have, as Sheikh Kazim mentioned, some of them are in Sutuh, right, at the beginning of their studies. And some of them in Dar's Akhara. And when you go Dar's Akhara, you 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 can do Dar's Akhara, the kind of traditional Dar's Akhara or the kind of main Dar's Akhara is the foundation. So according to the stats, for example, um it says a couple of years ago, there's around two hundred um Dar's Akhara of Fiqh al-Nusul going on, right? Which is a huge number, this is the highest level of of class that you can get. But obviously, and then it expands to different topics that we shall, we will talk about with Sheikh Kazim and I'll I'll share a few as well. Um just to show that how vast this Houser is in terms of the uh the different topics that it covers. And obviously, how deep as well it goes in the both in terms of quantity and quality. The Houser right now is just flowering, it's beautiful. A couple of photos I wanted to show about Dar's Akhara, we talked about Dar's Akhara. So this is um Ahkund Khurasani in Najaf. Um very interesting picture of him giving Dar's Akhara. Uh again, this is him um in another picture. This is uh Aythul Hujat, um it's such a beautiful atmosphere, Dar's Akhara, you know, like being around with them. Um these are photos from Dar's Akhara of today. Um so you know, these Dar's Akhara that happen within Masjid Al-Azam, for example, in Qum or in Faisya and different places where. I remember when I was beginning my Houser studies, the first few years, um you would go to the Haram for Ziarah and you'd just like. Stand or sit sometimes in the class of Aythul Jawadi, for example, Aythul Abma Karim Shirazi, and may Allah protect them. Um these are very special classes, basically. So when it comes to the different um the different topics that you have of Kharej. So you can, let's 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 talk it this way, that you have um the main knowledge of Islam, right, in these three things, right? You have Aqayz, you have um Aklak and you have Ahqam. So that which is related to our understanding. So in this field, you have things like Kalam, right? And in 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 the Houser, you learn not just Kalam in the traditional way, so Toheed, Adhalat, Nubuwwat, Imamat, Qiyamat. It is very depth, obviously, but you also learn about the new topics that come up. So um if you go to libraries that we have right now, so many books from within, from written from scratch, as well as translation from outside. So all of Kant's books and all the philo- what the philosophers have been translated and worked upon here. So topics like um humanism and secularism and. Uh hermaphroditics and philosophy of religion and religious prudism, and the list goes on, basically. So many of these topics in Aqayyad are discussed.
So the Western uh philosophy would be discussed over here.
Exactly, Western philosophy, how we answer it, um the the philosophy of Islam, how Islam perceives these kind of uh different discussions. So very, very interesting. And obviously, then come to philosophy and Irfan and the highest level of epistemology, these things, logic. Uh I mean, the uh the work that has happened in in the world of philosophy today is amazing, right? Um from Alamat Tabataba who took root to Bidaya and Nihaya, um and also the different Rasala, he has uh the different Epistles that he's calling things that he has in different topics. And carry on his students, Ayatollah Jawadi, Ayatollah Misbah, and Ayatollah Hassan Zadeh, Ammuli who passed away recently, and And carries on, basically, Ayatollah Yazan Bana and his Mo'assas are today. So that field, obviously, has its heart. So Ayatollah, you mentioned Darshaharaj of philosophy. So Ayatollah Yazan Bana, for example, has a Kharij on Nihaya, right, of philosophy. Um and then you have Aklak, where you have um the field of ethics. Again, so much work is being done right now, like it's amazing. Um from different angles as well. So whether it's looking at the Fadail and the Razail that we have, so the good traits and the bad traits, how to deal with them. Um talking about um how to do Astakhraj, how to find the Aklak from the Quran and Riwayat. Um as an example, Ata Tahri, if you can see on on the screen over here as well, Ata Tahri has started a Kharij on Aklak, right? Where he discusses Aklak from its roots, basically, in a Kharij, in Darshaharaj form.
Starting from understanding the human being as well, right? So there's a lot of prerequisites that are being discussed.
Yeah, so the understanding of the human being is amazing. Um you have uh amazing books that are recently published on in this field of ethics. And then you look at from very contemporary aspects as well, things like um self-confidence, things like public speaking, things like Ethics related to business, right? Um things like ethics in um uh in our society, so dealing with Family members, dealing with friends, dealing with um non-Muslims, uh people of other faiths and other communities, all these things come And are discussed in the in the field of ethics and relationship, et cetera.
Human rights and rights of animals, these kind of things are also.
Definitely, yeah, they're all discussed. And obviously, this ethics goes at the highest levels of discussions on uh the the Ma'rifah of Allah And the Ma'rifah of the Islamic Camille and how to reach Islamic Camille. And you find that Qom, one of the things that is amazing about uh uh Qom as well is that You also have Darshah Aklak, right? Where scholars of the highest rank of in the field of Aklak come and give what we call Darshah Aklak. Which our teachers, I'm mighty, I'm sure your teachers as well, they keep us telling us that, you know, you have to attend this Darshah Aklak because They play the role of not just increasing your understanding of Aklak, but also kind of a mo'adah that we have.
So this isn't like the purely intellectual aspect of life, this is a reminder, something that that spiritual revival, basically.
And I know some of my friends, for example, when they come from from abroad for Ziyarat as well, sometimes they 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 come to Darshah Aklak as well because it's a different field, it's a different mustery as well.
And it's more for also for general public as well. It's like, uh I remember Ayatollah Misbah, uh when he used to be alive, he used to have his Darshah Aklak and People from all walks of life would, you know, come there and attend that, yeah.
And very often, they take uh certain books to to discuss. So Ayatollah Tahri, for example, has has his Darshah Aklak on Monat al-Shabani, for example, or On the Hadith of Unan Basri, for example, or Ziyat Aminullah, for example, et cetera. Um and then you come to the field of um Ahqam, which is Usul and Fiqh, basically, where now you discuss the actions. And so in this field, it's very vast, right? Because you can discuss it from the Ahq- the Ahqam that is specific to myself, right? So how should I praise? How should I fast? How should I go to Hajj, et cetera? Which is kind of, you would say, traditionally has been placed a lot of importance on. So if you take um the the main books of Fiqh, for example, that I studied. A lot of these focuses on this Ibadah and Muhammaddah.
And usually, when you talk about Fiqh, this word comes to mind first, the the basically our duties towards Allah in terms of the prayers, the Ibadah and so on.
Exactly. But the understanding of Fiqh is related to action, right? And so now that the system is such that we have a, we have a a society that is led by a Uh a Faqih, right? What happens is that now our actions, we can look at actions that are in different spheres as well. So for example, Ayatollah Ar- Rafi, we just mentioned him, he has been going for on for ages now, many years, if not a decade or more, on discussing Fiqh Tarbiyat. Right? So child upbringing from a Fiqh perspective. So basically, child upbringing is an action, right? I mean, I'm dealing with my children.
It's a responsibility, a social responsibility, so um.
Exactly. So he spent a decade on this, right? And some of the volumes that we published, about about eight, nine volumes have already been published about this. Where he goes from right at the beginning of like understanding who the human being is, what is teaching, what is upbringing, et cetera, coming on to various new discussions, basically. And he's not the only one, Fiqh Tarbiyat, child upbringing in Fiqh has gone, uh a lot of discussion on this as well. If I can show you a couple of uh courses that, I've taken some of them as well, um so Keramat One, for example, where you can see how many scholars on on the panel. What's very interesting is that some of these classes and courses, they join together with experts as well in the field of psychology, in the field of child upbringing, in the field of Um child psychology, et cetera, to bring them together and to have uh discussions on these very important topics, right?
Of course, a lot of these topics are new, so the research is still going on. So this this kind of Keramat courses.
Yeah.
Uh so they're not Darshaharaj level, right?
No, they're not Darshaharaj. So Ayatollah Ar- Rafi is Darshaharaj level properly, right? But then you have these courses that So a lot of it is taken from him, a lot of it from other research, and they come and present it. So for example, this one over here is about the um Tarbiyat of daughters, right? Um and you can see, one, how many scholars, two, how many sisters who are are teaching this closely. So one of the things that the Hauza has produced as well is Um teachers and scholars at the rank of uh in in the sister. So we have Jabatul Zahra, we have Bintul Huda. So recently, the head of Jabatul Musa, Jabatul Zahra was appointed and she's uh, it's her sister, her name is uh Borqei. Amazing personality. I mean, if you look at over here, you can see how much she studies. She's at the level of Kharij, she studied. She's studied at the level of P E T at university. I mean, she's a respectable figure. She's not the only one. You'd be surprised. There's so many sisters out there that have Uh gone through this Hauza, have achieved, accomplished many different things, and now have taken positions, obviously, in their own Field where they would be able to give the best of what they have. Another example is I- uh Abasi, a very interesting personality. You can see how many books is published, like Uh a huge number of books is published in the field of child upbringing, as well as family life, as well as spouse selection, et cetera. Uh this all goes to show that, and I I leave it to Sheikh Kazim to complete, I mean, just to make drive this point that night. Hauza has taken kind of a new step, basically, really taking this Fiqh to another level. I mean, up to.
Before before Sheikh Kazim uh uh continues, I just want to highlight this point you've mentioned, uh which came up a few times. Where you mentioned that they're they're doing all these studies of contemporary topics and new topics, especially bringing it in this in 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 terms of social matters as well. But like you said, they they're going back and connecting all of that with Allah and the reality of the human being and so on. And this, I think this is something that shines out, right? So we have principles and and fundamentals and All of our sciences and our knowledge is being built on those realities that that we've established and goes back to Tauhid, basically. So we can say that a lot of these studies are in this in sa- in this sense, uh linked to Tauhid and that understanding of we have of God and of the realities of the world.
Exactly. So just building on that, so the whole idea was to build a society based on Tauhid. To take people closer to Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala. And if you see in this very large picture, this is our journey During the Gaybad that we are taking one step at a time. And a time will come where we would reach Imam Al-Mahdi. So this is also part of the journey. We are trying to get closer to Allah. Uh Hauza is part of that, this whole story, trying to uh lead this change and this movement uh towards Tauhid, towards Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala. And as you mentioned, that uh like one word that would link all these efforts is to Uh building a society, building families, building individuals based on Tauhid, of course, in our capacity Uh that we have. And and this has been going on. And what gives us a lot of hope and also it's the That it's the days related to the birth of Imam Al-Mahdi Alaihisalam. What gives us a lot of hope is that if you see through the history With all the difficulties and ups and downs, if you can uh see one clear thing is that we have gone ahead. We have been progressing. Things have been becoming better in terms of uh if you compare with Previous times, how much today people have interest in Islam, in living lives based on spirituality. And Tauhid will definitely say We are marching forward and there's a lot of hope. And probably, who knows, that we are very, very close to that
Insha Allah.
That turning point in history of humanity where the Imam of a time would come. So Yes, definitely, that's that was the purpose of the Hauza, to produce all this research. So just to complete what Sheikh Maktad said, so he gave a whole loads of uh topics, discussions that are happening. Uh just to complete it, I'll bring it back to those three things which I mentioned initially, that that's why the Hauza was there. So one was giving us an uh a very accurate understanding of Islam. And this field is active even today. So any topic that has anything to do with, for example, Quran and Hadith, You'll see that Hauza would try its best to produce the best and the most accurate understanding of that thing. So uh take example of the Holy Quran and understanding it. So a regular standard work on Tafsir. So you take Tafsir al-Mizan, of Allah Matataba. It's a, it's a, it's a It's a Tafsir that probably, uh in words of Ayatollah Jawadi, his student himself, he said that probably it will take us hundred years To realize what Allah Matataba did in that Tafsir.
And this is, Ayatollah Jawadi is the one who just finished his.
So so continuing uh on the uh on the path of his teacher, Allah Matataba, Ayatollah Jawadi, uh may Allah protect him. He 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 continued his Darshah Tafsir for close to thirty years. And believe me, that takes a lot of consistency and effort, and it's not that he's reading from somewhere. Is every single Darsh is Darshaharaj of Tafsir, I would say, if you want to use it.
How many volumes has has this produced?
So uh the um number of volumes that have been printed is close to fifty. They're saying that by the time it's all edited and and properly published, the number of volumes is set to reach around hundred volumes. So it's an encyclopedia of everything that you need to know about the Quran. And that was the duty of the Hauza, right? That Quran is our main source. So Hauza will and should produce a very, very accurate understanding of all these topics that are there. So that has always been the case, and that's what the Hauza is doing. So even today, a lot of research goes on these Uh you would say the regular Islamic topics. And this would definitely continue, be it Quran, be it different Ahadith, Be it uh different topics related to uh Aklak, or the different things that Islam speaks about. But the second area where a lot of research goes on today, and it's a very promising area, emerging area, is To fulfill the needs of the society in the context of the modern world, in in the today's needs. And I would add another context which came up was that given the context of having an Islamic government. So this, I would say, had been a a very important driving force Which has led Hauza to explore completely new areas, which before were under-discussed, uh not so much attention was Uh was paid to this. So I'll just mention uh two very general areas of uh new research that's happening. All of them uh focused towards providing Islamic solutions to different uh issues in the society. So uh there's one area, you also pointed out to this, and that is uh uh the Fiqh of Islamic systems. So I'll very briefly explain what it is. So uh there's this idea uh called Fiqhenism, uh it's a Farsi terminology. It's very difficult to even translate it because it's a terminology that has uh come forth in 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 certain settings. So uh if you want to loosely translate it, uh the idea is that uh we want to build our societies Uh based on Islamic teachings. Societies are run by these different social systems. So every society, every country needs a a variety of social systems to function. So you have the economic system, you have the educational system, you have the political system, you have the system of law. The laws in a country are very important. You have the system of media. Uh it's it's a whole system that is functioning and running there. And for example, you have the uh the health system. Okay, so uh imagine these different systems and uh how crucial and important they are for running a government. And if you want to say that this is an Islamic government, uh the most important thing for you would be to say that The systems plugged in in this society are Islamic in nature. So what this has done in the Hauza, and it's a recent change that's Uh that has started and it's taking place, whereby now the question and the paradigm has changed. So before, when it came to the issue of Fiqh and jurisprudence, uh the primary concern was to Uh give answers to the questions of individuals. So this question of giving Fatwa and Ifta. And this could be any topic. So for example, our Fukaha and Marajah, if you take to them the regular topics, Salat, Zakat, Homes, they would give us answers. And they would even answer uh us our contemporary questions. So we have questions regarding banking. We have questions regarding, for example, a very new topic that's very hot, that is cryptocurrency. So so what happens is that with respect to these new topics or even the old topics, people as individuals have questions. And the Fukaha would go through the sources using that methodology, they would answer these questions and give a a conclusion, a result. For example, is dealing with cryptocurrencies permissible in the sense that is this transaction valid or invalid? Is it haram or it's halal? So all these different aspects. So Fukaha have always done this. They've answered contemporary questions in every day and age. So even I wanted to uh show this that Uh recently, uh the Hauza of Qom, uh or the Hauza of Iran has this uh a small section Uh which is, it's called uh Daftar Fiqh Muasser. So It's a section where they discuss these contemporary issues. So recently, one of the Fukaha there, he wrote a book on The Fiqh of cryptocurrencies. So the idea there is to answer questions of individuals. So that has always been there. What the change we are looking at is that now the paradigm and the question has changed. So now the question is no longer this, that what's the the Haqm, the Shar'i Haqm of a cryptocurrency? Now the question is that what is Islam's economic system? So it's not a question of an individual's action that's being asked. It's being asked that if you were to ask Islam that In a society, in a country, how should the economic system look like? On what principles it should be run? What are the goals that that economic system should have?
So basically, normally, we go about it by trying to say, how does this fit in Islam? Now we're trying to say, in fact, let's Let Islam speak and what would Islam propose instead?
So so this is a very, very important area of research. So you have many Darshaharaj that are happening Uh nowadays on this topic. So just to give a few examples, so probably we have close to, out of these Two hundred Darshaharaj which were mentioned, uh close to twenty are on this topic of The jurisprudence of Islamic systems. So uh they take a different approach where the idea is to outline And give that picture of what these systems would look like. So there are different scholars working on this. So just to give a very famous example, uh Shahid Asad comes and he writes this His famous book called Ikhtisaduna, Our Economics. So the idea was that, that he comes, he criticizes The two dominant uh economic systems of his time, the economic theories of his time, namely capitalism and Socialism, communism, Marxism, whatever you want, would like to call it. So that idea of organizing an economy. So it's not one question, or it's not about standalone issues that we want to answer. We want to look at the whole system. So capitalism is a certain way of organizing the economy. Communism is another way of organizing an economy. So Shahid Saad comes in his book. He criticizes both of these systems and in the later part of his book, he comes and outlines The general structure of an Islamic economic system. I I'm trying, I'm speaking very in vague words because uh even to define what a social system is And what are the different elements that go in a social system will take uh a good amount of time. But he comes and he says that, look, if Islam were to design from scratch based on its foundations, Based on its understanding of God and reality of human being and the goals of the human beings, based on its ethical principles, All of this put together, if Islam were to design an economic system, this is how it would look like. Of course, the research has continued after him, and he did not, of course, have time to go through all the details of an economic system Because it's a huge thing that you're talking about. But this trend uh has continued. So today, for example, you have uh Darshaharaj on Islamic economic system. So just to give a few names if someone is interested. So for example, Ayatollah Hadawi Tehrani has a Darshaharaj on that. Uh for example, you have Ayatollah Araqi, Sheikh Mohsin Araqi has a Darshaharaj on Islamic economic system, trying to Give us that picture. Then you go into more specific topics like banking, uh Islamic banking system. So Uh one of the top scholars was Said Abbas Musvian, who passed away uh around a year ago because of Corona, of the cor- because of Covid. So he was a top authority in Islamic banking, so trying to design a banking system uh based on Islamic teachings. Of course, there's a lot of technical things that go in there. Uh you look at Islamic political systems. For example, Ayatollah Kaabi has a Uh has a Darshaharaj on a very interesting topic. So he's trying to speak about, uh if you have an Islamic government, How would his, how would its international relations and foreign policy work? I mean, so it's not.
Very specific as well.
Yeah, so so he's gone into a very specific topic. The other Darshaharaj on Islamic political system are trying to build the The foundations and the general uh things that an Islamic political system would need. But his topic is i- is interesting because He's focusing on a topic and the question is completely different. It's not about uh uh an individual's duty. So basically. It's not about, uh, uh, an individual's duty. So, basically, in one sense, it's about, uh. Uh, finding out duties of social entities. And the biggest of these social entities would be, for example, a government. So, you would have this question. So, the question he would try to answer is, if you have an Islamic government in today's setting. With all the complexity of the modern world, based on Islamic teachings, narrations, verses of the Quran, and of course the intellect. How should this government have its international relationships? And how should its foreign policy be, uh, be arranged? And of course, uh, there's whole details into it. For example, as a result of these discussions, you would come up with a system, with principles, with, with the framework. With do's and don'ts, with guidelines, and all of that would define, for example, the foreign policy of an Islamic government. What stance it should take with respect to different things that happen uh around itself. And for any government, that's an important concern, right? That they are placed in a complex world and where foreign relations are so extremely important. And then you go to the topic of Tarbia and Islamic educational system. So, there's a question regarding that as well, that how, how should your schools, for example, look like? And how educational system should be, and then uh it, you can even extend it to other topics, media and other things. So, uh, that's one field of research that's coming up very fast today. And as I mentioned before, that one of the characteristics of Hauser is that it's very heavily focused on needs. The practical needs. And this realization happened that one of the important needs of. Uh, today's time, especially given that here they have a government, is to fulfill the Islamic needs of this government. So, so let me mention one very interesting incident for you. So, uh, we have one of our teachers are studying Makassab with him, he's a relatively well-known figure here. So, he told us once that he was in the presence of Ayatollah Sistan in Najaf, he had gone for Ziarat and then he went to see him. So, one of the questions that Ayatollah Sistan, uh, may Allah protect him, he asked him is that. What are the different topics that are being discussed? So, this is probably like ten, fifteen years ago, where these new discussions were not yet very common, uh, very rare. And now it's slowly becoming common, Islamic foreign relations and Islamic economic system. So, he gave a few examples of famous, uh, uh, topics, uh, and Darsa Kharej that were being discussed. And none of them had these, uh, these very important social and political issues being discussed. So, uh, in response, Ayatollah Uthmas Sistan tells him that, I'm very surprised. I was thinking that, uh, you people must be discussing the needs of your government. Uh, the needs, for example, so he even mentioned, he, so he said that I would thinking that you'd be discussing foreign relations. You'd be discussing economic system, banking. So, so, so this is, this shows that this was a need, this is a need that is there today. And I would even say that even beyond the setting of a government, even for other communities. This idea of moving, uh, from just focusing on our individual duty to. Looking at Islamic systems for life, how do we build our communities? So, we have communities around the world, the English-speaking communities. Each of these communities, they need some system. They have schools, they have, uh, a community organization, they have so many other things.
Collect funds.
They collect funds, they have media arms doing different things. Uh, if you just start imagining that how great and amazing it would be if we start making all of these Islamic. And see Islam.
Truly Islamic, because a lot of times we have the name, for example, the Islamic Seminary or Islamic School of, and then we think that this is.
Yeah, so, uh, and as you rightly said, that a change of name is good. But, uh, un- until and unless the substance and the content that goes in, for example, in that school is not going to change. And it's not going to become truly Islamic. And when I say truly Islamic, this is the criteria. Like, how do you know something is truly Islamic? Is that, is it achieving Islamic goals in that specific area or not? Is my Islamic school producing children which match that Islamic standard of a youth? So, Islam is described, uh, 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 given a description of an ideal youth, what should be his characteristics? If I see that my school, which I have named a very good Islamic name, and which is good, we should keep these Islamic names. The end result and the product is not in accordance with what Islam wants, and Islamic goals are not being achieved. Then we should, uh, like, come back to ourselves and think that, uh, there's something wrong with my school. It's probably not truly Islamic. There's a lot of thinking we need to do about it.
I think today we feel that there is a, a sort of a dichotomy, that if you have something, like right now when you're saying that has they reached that Islamic ideal. Then we feel like that's, that's something separate from that education level. So, there's Islamic ideal, and then there's Islamic, and then there's academic education level. Whereas an Islamic ideal would include that one as well, correct?
So, it's basically trying to imagine that any human being who has this goal of reaching Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala. What should school give him? Both in terms of his material knowledge and both in terms of his, his ultimate.
Personality.
His Aklak, his personality and his spirituality. So, but again, as I said, this is a challenging area, it's a newly developing area. And a lot of research is happening in this area. So, just, I'll complete this with the second area I wanted to mention, although I don't want to prolong it too much, is that. Uh, one other area of research where a lot of focus now is on this area is to. Uh, develop this idea called Islamic Social Sciences, Islamic Humanities. And, uh, this is a, a, a important pursuit because the world today. If you understand it in the context of the modern world, is dominated by the, uh, I, I don't know what name you'd want to put. For example, I would say the secular humanities, the secular social sciences. So, the, for example, if you go to psychology, it's based on very secular and humanist foundations. You go to other social.
Basically, the way, uh, the human being is perceived in that secular way. This is the foundation based on which the psychology is also growing. So, that would be a difference when it comes to Islamic perspective.
Economic system, politics, all of human sciences, basically, social sciences.
So, so all of these, so for example, even economic system, there are economic theories that go be, go behind it. So, and these are discussed, uh, across the universities around the world. So, all these topics, from psychology to sociology to economics, to political science. All these, and the general term and category they put it under is humanities or social sciences. So, one of the challenges that the Hauser realized, uh, when it came to dealing with these social issues is that. These social sciences are not Islamic. And they are built and they have grown in an environment that was never Islamic, that was very secular. And at times very anti-religion. I mean, you can understand, uh, the, the history of Europe and how these sciences have. Grown in, in, in the modern world. So, this became an important issue. Uh, and concern for the Hauser to look into this. And then he started working on all these different topics. And today, this is a very important area of research.
I thought of in that speech two years ago, he says there's two hundred different courses in the house happening on social sciences today.
Yeah. So, right from, so just to give an example, so, uh, Ayatollah Jawadi, may Allah protect him. So, had he has this, so he had this amazing, uh, uh, thing in Tafsir. So, one of his Tafsir efforts was to, uh, in a, in the sequential Tafsir, starting from the first surah till the end, which he finished. And which is being printed under the name Tasnim. But he also had another set of, uh, 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 classes on Tafsir, but they're based on their topic base. So, he has this whole volume called Society in the Quran. Okay, so what is this? This is, if you, I want to rebrand it, I would say this is sociology based on the verses of the Quran. So, he'll go through all the ideas that are discussed in sociology, but sourced from the verses of the Quran. It's really amazing, even if I read the, some of the titles that he's been discussing, it's amazing. So, for example, he starts with, I'm just reading randomly, so it says, uh, structure of a society. Uh, uh, this is a discussion in sociology, that how is human society structured? He'll go through verses of the Quran. Then another discussion, he goes and he says that, for example, what are the principles that drive a society? What's the driving force behind a society? There are many, many verses of the Quran that talk about these principles that drive the society. Unity of a society, what brings unity in a society? What's that criteria?
Together the society.
When can call you, when can you really call a unit as one society? What binds them? These are all discussions that are, uh, that are there in, uh, society. Then the discussion on society building. How do you build a society? There are many verses in the Quran. So, this is one example of, uh, exploring these, uh, social sciences, but from Islamic perspective. Uh, and you, you may think that what does it mean to have an, uh, to have Islamic psychology? Is psychology Islamic, not Islamic? The answer is very clear. The answer is that we definitely have Islamic psychology because we have a source of knowledge. That the secular psychology doesn't have. And what is that source of knowledge? Uh, these two important things, uh, create this whole new thing called Islamic psychology. One is use of intellect and philosophy to uncover the, the realities of human psyche. And this is important. So, uh, the philosophical discussions about human psyche. And the other thing is the scriptural sources. I mean, sometimes we underestimate, uh, the value of these sources. If you look at the Holy Quran, uh, seventy places, it talks about different characteristics of insan. And many of these characteristics, when you go and look, they are psychological in nature. So, for example, a verse in the Quran would say that. Human being has been created hasty in nature. This being a bit hasty and want to reach quick conclusion is, uh, is a psychological characteristic. So, so, I'm just giving a very small example. So, the scholars have worked this based on both philosophical foundations and Koranic. And the Hadith that we have, they would come up and i- it's a field of research on this idea of understanding human mind, human psyche. How does he work from inside? How does he make decisions from an Islamic perspective? So, these two are very, very important areas of research.
Yeah, none of this discards the importance of, um, of life sciences and the contribution that sciences has done. This putting into perspective, basically, where that is relevant, they will bring it in.
So, even, yeah, so even experimental psychology, as they would call it, we also have a place in this whole. Uh, paradigm of Islamic psychology. So, it's not about discarding one tool. So, basically, the regular psychology is heavily experimental. It is based on experiments and doing all these psychological experiments. But in Islamic setting, we would say that we'll combine all different tools. So, we'll use the five senses and experiment. We'll use intellectual pursuit, which is philosophy, and we'll also, uh, use our scriptural sources. And in fact, use all these three to arrive at a very, very accurate and amazing, uh, understanding. Uh, of a human being and how his nafs were. So, just to even complete this, that this has been a field of study from very long. So, for example, this, it's called, uh, Ilmun Nafs. So, this has been traditionally been studied. So, uh, it technically is part of the philosophical and intellectual sciences where, starting from likes of Bu Ali Sina and the other philosophers. Uh, even Mullah Sadra and then after Allahumma Tabata way, and then his students, they've always spoken about Ilmun Nafs. And understanding human being and his spiritual side, his psyche, his mind, uh, from a philosophical perspective. And when we add to that the Koranic perspective and the Hadith, it gives us a very complete and beautiful picture. Of how human psyche was. So, that's a, a very important area of research today as well.
So, basically, the, 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 the crux of this is that the Hauser is very active in contemporary issues. And is trying to deal with the needs of the society at an individual personal level as well as the societal level. And we talk about different levels of society. We talk about from, you know, from husband-wife relationship to the small family unit, to the bigger family unit. To, uh, you know, the, the small communities, the societies and, uh, at the government level, uh, as well. So, the Hauser is in fact, uh, working to contribute to society and fulfilling the needs, and this is really something really important.
Uh, just to il- illustrate over here, this is, this is some of the Darsa Kharej at least, that happened, uh, last year. Um, and this is obviously Corona years also, you can, you can see.
This is in Qom only?
This is in Qom only. Um, so if you look at this, for example, you find that, uh, uh, Ayatollah Sayed Ahmed Hatemi. He, um, does Haqook of Kudak, so it means the rights of a child, so cha- children, rights of children, for example. Um, Ayatollah Shabzan Nadar over here has the conditions that you can put in a contract. Uh, between, um, in, in a Bino Milali setting, so in an international setting, basically, between Muslims and non-Muslims, for example, right? Uh, Ayatollah Mohsin Iraqi over here has, uh, Fiqhul Ijtama, so social, so, so, um, sociology as you mentioned. Um, Ayatollah Mohamed Taki Shahidi has Mahiyate Pool, which is that the.
The, uh, the nature of.
The nature of money, basically.
What does money mean? What it goes behind it, yeah? Because it's an important topic, right?
Currencies, yeah.
So, money and its reality, so is it, as you said, currency, gold, back currency, we used to attempt now, it's contractual, the. The values given by the governments who, and then now we live in a world where you have this completely new idea of giving value in terms of cryptocurrency. So, they would go into all these ideas and trying to understand that, from an Islamic perspective, what gives value to a currency? And that has a lot of impact, it's one of the foundational issues in, in any economic system. So, that, that is a very interesting topic that's being discussed.
You also have Fiqh of, uh, Burs, so, um, uh, um.
Share markets.
Share markets, I know it's French, but, um, you have Fiqh of medicine, right? Fiqh of Peseshki over here.
So, that's really, that's really important, right? Because there's a lot of questions related to medicine, related to organ donation and gender changes and all of that. So, this is against.
So, I was gonna mention, so, just mention, uh, keep, hold on a minute, I'll come back to it in a second. Uh, this is a post about the Darsa Kharej in Mashhad, just to explain, just sure that it's not just in Qom, but across the Hauser. So, in Mashhad, you have this, uh, Darsa Kharej. Again, same thing, you have Fiqh of Haqumat, uh, the Fiqh of the government. You have Fiqh of Peseshki, the Fiqh of the, of medicine, um, you have Fiqh of Khanwade, Fiqh related to family life, how, how should our family life be? And so you see so much work happening. Now, couple of things, people often ask, uh, okay, how do we, how does this seem, basically? So, one way we see students classes, so students go and attend these classes, they sit with the teacher, um, attend the classes afterwards, they do their own research. Another way that this, uh, is portrayed is through articles, right? Academic research is portrayed in, in, uh, in articles. So, you find that, um, just like in the academy world, universities, you have things like PubMed and GストR, etc. that we're using. In the Hauser as well, you also have, um, this Noormax, for example, or other, uh, systems whereby. Um, journals are produced with all these research papers, and they're, they're in hundreds, not just one or two, right? So, each institute, each Hauser or each big seminar has a journal published every month or every six months or every three months. Where they publish their research. So, one way where we do research, for example, is straight where you're going to look at research paper that produces a lot of these things. Other ways that these things are seen is obviously through books, so books are published. Um, every year we have this, um, uh, book fair in Tehran, for example. And I was looking at the stats, they're saying like a hundred percent, a hundred eighty percent increase in the number of books are published from the Hauser. The most publishing, the, the, the city that publishes the most book is in Qom, right? And the amount of publishers in Qom have increased tremendously, right? And obviously, I'm not saying all of them are religious books, but a lot of them have been. This over here you can see is, is a building, a structure called Nasharan, uh, or Publishers Complex. This is in Muallim, you can see the beautiful city of Qom over here. Uh, we're not too far away, just behind this. Um, so, I mean, I take my kids there for, sometimes we go to the park, sometimes we go there, how, that's how beautiful this place is. And, and it's just, it's three, four, five floors of just bookshops, and just amazing, it's beautiful, right?
You take your kids there because there's kid stuff there as well?
There's loads of kids books, definitely. But also, it's such a nice place, you just roam around and trying to increase the love of the books for my kids. Um, there's a couple of books that, for example, that have been published, and this is just like a tiny, like zero point zero zero one percent of the books are published. But Development Psychology, uh, from Islamic Principles, um, Methodology of Tafsir of the Quran. Mafaatul Hayat that we, we've talked about so many times as, as our kind of, um, w- way to live our lives, basically. Uh, social life, family life, et cetera. Uh, International Human Rights, based on Islamic Principles, um, the Usul and the principles of, um. Management, right? Mudiriyyat, management, um, confidence in Islam, self-confidence in Islam, self-respect in Islam. Uh, there's a lot of work has been done on, um, Embryon and IVF, et cetera, et cetera. Another way that these research are, are shown as well is through, um, what, what they call Neshaste Ilmi, right? Where there's a small, small seminars basically that happen. Um, a lot of them have been online because of the recent Corona thing, but now a lot of them are also back to, um, these conference halls. By the way, conference halls over here, I don't know, but they make it really beautiful. So, there's loads of these conference halls and seminars that happen. And I was going through a list and, God, you realize how much out there is being discussed, right? In random fields sometimes, right? Um, just sort of, in, uh, so, some things that stand out basically, obviously, is the, the level of preciseness of the topic, right? Because you're gonna pre- present a research paper there. Another thing that stands out is the level of, uh, impact of sisters as well, and there's also, you have a lot of, uh, women that come and present. And women are active in the field as well. Um, another thing that stands out is, is how, we don't, not just the Hauser, but also the work that happens between the Hauser and universities together. So, you find a lot of these places, you find there's two, one or two scholars and talabists from the Hauser. As well as one or two individuals that are in the field, in academic field at university, when they come together, present their, their material together. So, on various topics across human sciences, across Islamic sciences, et cetera. Um, so that's, that's another way where research is produced. Now, obviously, at the end of the day, it comes then to individual students to go and obviously do tablir and, um, have these. Uh, knowledge being part, uh, given to, to others as well for, obviously, the benefit of all the, the Omma together to, to progress.
And what's really important in, in all of this is that, um, it's important for scholars to have that overall. It's important for scholars to have that overall uh understanding of Islam as well before going into one of these, because we're, at the end of the day, we're we're first Islamic scholars. We should have a good understanding of Islam as a whole and then going into one of these specializations.
There's one more thing I wanted to add, um talking about how Sheikh Kazim mentioned that, talking, answering the needs of the people. There's a mosque that, a mosques that are opened um a long time ago, called the Mozu Shinasim. Where they go and look at a lot of these discussion of Fiqh and and kind of find the Muzuf, right? So as an example.
What do you mean by Muzuh?
So, for example, in in the Ahkam of praying Qasar namas, you learn that if you go outside the city by a co- a number of kilometers or miles. After that, you count it as a musafir, as a traveler, and therefore your break, your fasting breaks, you have to pray namas. And maybe people ask, okay, where is the border of the city? How do I know if I come back from the Hadith al-Akhos, as it's uh in in terminology? So these hadiths have come in, as you can see the picture over here, on the motorway. Um they've put these massive boards saying that this is now the Hadith al-Akhos. They went and calculated basically for us. So you have to find in many different cities over here, Qum and Mashhad, where they've put down Hadith al-Akhos stats over here, right?
So it's very clear for us, we know exactly.
Exactly. Another thing they've done, for example, is looked at every single fish that you could possibly find in Iran, right? You can fish in Iran. And they've gone through all of them and find out if they have scales or not. Quite useful, actually published book as well.
So it's a very practical way of looking at things.
Same with birds as well, so you go through all the birds you could find in Iran. If you were ever to go hunting and find a bird, you can go to that book and say, okay, this bird is halal or haram. Um they've also made a museum out of it, so um if you want, you can even show this, the video I took a long time ago. This museum where they've brought all these animals and say, okay, this animal is halal or not, this fish halal or not. So. Kind of really looked at, uh they've been published books as well, so I'll I'll show you some books. The Ahkam of uh Washing Machines, um and different different other topics, but they've really looked at the 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 Muzuh itself, the subject itself and analyzed it. And made it very convenient for the people to get the answers. So if if I could just add one more thing over here, and that is um one of the things that um. The Hawsa has been able to do very strongly, especially in Qum over here, is to keep up with the technology. And to really, um I mean, use the technology for its own benefit, put it this way. So Ayatollah Khamenei, many years ago, I mean, you can see the man's long vision that he has, um set up this big institute called Noor. Um and which now produces um many softwares, I mean, state-of-the-art softwares. And recently, I was going through. The different softwares that are available from the different Ahn Asunnah universities and Hawsa. Compared to what Noor has produced, it's just a world different, right? What No- Noor has been able to do in terms of putting out there. Um the different books, the different texts, et cetera, in a in a platform, in a software that can do research, that is organized. That is very friendly, user-friendly, et cetera, is very, very amazing. But that's not only that, I mean, and Noor, the terms, amounts of software that are available in Noor, they're both available CDs, you can put them. Directly install them, they're also available on cloud as well.
They recently bought this whole cloud system, right?
Exactly, which is uh which is amazing from them to be to do that. Um but they have so much other things as well, like one of the things that's very amazing is this. Um AI that they've worked on, right? Um where, for example, you can, um at at the click of a button, you can get. Um a a summary of a research paper produced by 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 this site. Or, for example, you can put any Arabic text and it'll do the Arab for you, right? Or, for example, you can. Um find a Hadith, they've got a whole Google set, kind of setup, where a research, a search database, basically, for. Hadith, for Quran verses, for quotes from the Ulama, et cetera. Um they can do so much more, so it it's really, really interesting how they're really.
The search engine is really powerful.
The search engine is powerful. Um they've made this whole, I mean, over here you can see this whole history they've put across, right? From the time of the Prophet all the way to now, where they've on a on a very beautiful setup, where you just zoom in and zoom out. See all the events that have happened across history in different places. So work has been done and and obviously over here is what we see in the Hawsa in terms of the. Um the in the technological usage, right, of, for example, PowerPoint presentations, um animations, uh video conferences. Online, et cetera. Um really, you'd be surprised how when Corona happened, everything went online, how quickly the Hawsa was to respond and make all their classes online. So it's really beautiful to see that Hawsa is using the advancements of technology to add its own benefit.
Brilliant. Okay, so um Alhamdulillah, you've mentioned many different fields and and a lot of work going on. Uh now, taking the perspective of of a layman who's uh who's living his life, okay, and Hawsa is doing so much, and as you mentioned, what, a hundred thousand students, right? Out of which many thousands of them would be experts, at least a few hundreds of them. Now, we have experts in all these different fields, right? And just like any academic circle, there will be differences of opinions. Now, when it comes to Islam, Islam is not just something that you know about and you have a a knowledge about it and that's it, you wanna bring it practically in your life. And a lot of time, this is to do with your Aakhirah, this is to do with your hereafter. Now, what does a person. Uh who's a layman, who's not a scholar, who does he refer to? What does he do with all these? These difference of opinions between the Ulama in the different fields? Who does he go to? How does he choose, uh you know, who to follow in the different fields?
Um so it's it's a very important question. So you can, there's a different way to talk about it, Sheikh Kazim will add more fruitful things. Um so one one thing is that we need to realize first and foremost that a lot of these discussions are what we say Ilmi discussions, they're they're the level. Academic intellectual discussions that, I mean, for example, me as a layman over here, when I go to the field of medicine. All that I want is my doctor to give me ma- um um a particular medic- medicine, for example, to solve my issue. And perhaps I'm a curious in nature, kind of more um more curious, you know, things. I might ask him a few questions here and there. Never would this doctor go back to his years of research and say, okay, there was this opinion about this, and then this is how it affects this particular. Um molecule and this is how the molecule touched this receptor and that. These are kind of in- intellectual discussions that. The difference of opinion in that level kind of don't concern me. I want to see the result. I want to see that final product over here, which is more important. What's crucial is is because we have to, I have to understand as a layman in the field of medicine, that I don't have enough knowledge. I could possibly pick up the books. But I don't have enough knowledge, information to go and find out, okay, what the difference of opinion, compare them or come to a conclusion myself. I need to rely on the expert.
Hmm, yeah, I would even add to that, that uh just mentioned that the discussions are uh intellectually in nature, I'll add one more word to it, that. Many of these discussions are very technical in nature as well. There's a lot of terminology, there's a lot of things going on there that. As a layman, if I'm going to pick up a big book on medicine, half of it won't make sense to me even. And then if I force myself. Without understanding the technical background of all these different things, I may misunderstand. So it happens and. When it comes to Islamic studies, uh I feel that sometimes it happens more that there's a lot of technical. Methodological things going on there. And as a layman, I may not understand it and. I might think that I have understood it properly, I went and read, for example, that's a Kharij of someone. But there's a, there's, we should be careful of this, that uh sometimes some kind of intellectual pursuits are. Require a certain level of expertise and and they are very technical in nature, so that's important.
Putting putting aside the very technical uh and uh uh discussions, very academic discussions, at the end. Uh when it comes to the fruitful uh results that I as a layman am supposed to act upon, at the end of the day, we do see difference of opinions between the the scholars. So how do I as a layman deal with this?
Okay, so uh there are a few things to keep in mind regarding uh difference of opinion. So uh. One thing is that difference of opinion in any field of study is is always there, so. Uh just, I I'm I'm saying this because uh it shouldn't be thought that difference of opinion is something which is. Only happens in Hawsa amongst the scholars. So any field of academic study you see, you'll always find that. The top, top authorities there in certain issues will have difference of opinion.
It's Barakah, right, it's the Ummah.
Yeah, so so the question is that uh a bit of insight into why this difference of opinion exists. And that the second question would be, how do we deal with it? That's very important. So why does this difference of opinion exist? When it comes to Hawsa and the the driving force behind these intellectual pursuits, the main idea. And the aim is to understand the truth. So that's the main driving force, and I would even generalize it to all academic pursuits. So around the world, when people are researching on different topics, mathematics, physics, biology, medical sciences. Uh in, I can very uh clearly say that they're looking for truth, they're looking for reality, they want to uncover what's real and out there. So even in the Hawsa, the idea is to understand the reality of Islam, what's right and what's not right, okay? And how does that happen? We have sources to understand Deen and Islam, and there's a method to be applied, okay? And now, when different scholars, they apply different methods, two things happen, and this is very important, that. Across a period of time and history, some issues and some matters in that field of study. Become conclusively established. There's so much proof, there's so much research. There's so much discussion that has happened regarding certain elements and uh topics of that field that. That thing is considered established in that field. So a- any field you take, for example, there are certain things which they call established in Fiqh. I mean, very, very simple examples, that, for example, that we have something in Islam called prayer that's obligatory five times a day. Uh the number of proofs that we have regarding this, the amount of discussion has happened, it has left this answer conclusive. It has left this question conclusively answered. Yes, when it comes to specific questions. New questions, new avenues of research, different researchers, they put their efforts, and there you can have difference of opinion. Of course, but difference of opinion also has to be in a certain framework.
So, so yeah, where do you draw the line, basically? Where do you say this is a difference of opinion and this is completely, you know, off?
So one of the simple ways to know if it's uh you can say an acceptable difference of opinion is to uh. Look at these two important things, especially in the setting of the Hawsa. One is that you look at the expertise of that person. Is he qualified? Uh this person who's giving this opinion to express an opinion of this kind. And now, opinions can be very, very different, right? Sometimes a person who doesn't have enough qualifications comes and gives an opinion that requires Ijtihad.
We're not talking about qualifications on people, talk about really like he has.
And then there would be and there are ways of finding out if this person is qualified or not. There can be many different ways of. Understanding who's an expert and who claims to be an expert. So that's, but if you see that this person is expert in this field. That's one. Second thing to see is that he's come up with enough arguments and proofs to support his claim. Especially when it's a claim that goes against a lot of what the previous experts have said. So. It raises eyebrows, right? You say that, okay, everyone in this field has been believing in this thing. This person has come up with a new opinion, which is fine, but we'll have to see his credentials, his expertise. And also what has he brought to establish his claim and prove it. I'll just add third factor also, and that is that we should also look at the Takwa of that person and that. Uh the motives behind uh behind these kind of opinions, and especially when it comes to Islam and religion, it's a highly sensitive matter. And uh this aspect that the scholar, however great he may be. If this aspect of Takwa and that being very fair in his research and not letting his personal motives. Come in the researcher, even some even uh wrong motives come in the way of research. Uh i- i- is very, very important. I'll just give a very small example. So. Uh there was this question regarding the water in the wells, so uh is it?
We talk about a long time ago.
Long time ago, since the time of Allah Mahilli, so this question was there, that if Najasa falls in a well. Uh does it make the entire thing najis or no, it's connected to a source and. Uh it it's 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 at the level of core that it doesn't become najis. This was a discussion. So. Allah Mahilli at his time wanted to research this topic. And it's very convenient, right, that if Najasa falls in well and it doesn't make it najis, it's easy, right? You save from so much trouble, like. Otherwise, there's a whole list of things you'd have to do, remove this amount of water and clean it. So he had a well in his house. So as a researcher, somehow it would be convenient for him to come to this conclusion that. If Najasa falls in a well, it doesn't make it najis. Look what he did and look the amount of Takwa he had while doing research, that he completely filled up the well and he got rid of the well from his house. Why? Because he didn't want this motive to come in the way of his research that maybe. I am a bit biased when dealing with understanding these narrations, because it's going to be to my benefit, my personal motive.
To the other side that, no, it makes it najis, then it'll be very inconvenient for me and I might not accept it.
He did come to that conclusion only, and he can now say, stand on, probably say that I came to the conclusion that it's not gonna be najis. And I, my motive wasn't for my own, my own uh eas- eas- ease of uh convenience, because I don't have a well anyways.
Well, anyway, yeah. So so if, uh what I can gather from from all of this that you've mentioned. Is that look, uh a difference of opinion is not something that's bad, it's in fact something that's good, something that exists, and we. Uh we sort of uh, as as we term it, we sort of celebrate the difference of opinions, right? But um obviously, we need to see what the source of that uh difference of opinion is, why does it come about, what's the backing of it? Has the scholar who's deferring his opinion, has he looked at all the other opinions and given an answer to to all of them, right? So recently, I was reading a a a book and um the scholar was coming with a very different perspective uh of history. His own narrative of history, and it was quite interesting for me that this is something new. But then when we did a bit of research with with myself and my friends studying, we realized that this um uh this person has. Uh overlooked so many other uh narrations and other historical reports that sort of tipped the balance completely and are not in his favor at all. So it's fine, it's it's true that, okay, I've come up with a new narrative and a new opinion, but is that opinion really countering those, what's currently there in the. In what we would call the mainstream of experts, or is is it really something new, or is it just ignoring a big chunk of of already existing? Evidence, and because it's ignoring such big uh uh literature, well, it's very easy to come up with with a new opinion.
And Hawsa has had never had fear of new opinions. And I I'll, I can even give examples of places where uh established authority in the field with strong arguments. Answering all different opinions that were present, of course, based on his own foundations that he had built in the methodological sense. He came up with a new opinion and that new opinion was accepted as a valid difference of opinion. So we have many, many examples of this. For example, Atullah Shubairi is an Jani, so he's a Marja. In certain matters, he has difference of opinion, because he's an established authority in the field, he's an expert, his expertise is. Established beyond doubt. For someone like him, who's the level of Marja Iya and his expertise. He has extensive discussion, so I myself got a chance to study this part from his Darasah Hajj. He's an extensive discussion, going through the the proofs brought by everyone else, and he answers them. And then he comes to his own conclusion. So he has a extensive discussion and then.
Proven himself in his opinion, basically.
And because he had everything right in terms of his Takwa, no one doubts that he's doing any of these for any personal gain, for example. His, the proof, he's discussed it, he just didn't come out and say that, uh this is my opinion, uh and I'm just going to be firm on this. No, he came, he. Established it, he's presented it. Other experts would differ on him, but they would respect this difference of opinion because. He has all the right credentials. I'll just add one more point, that sometimes if we see that. Someone comes with a new alternative opinion and Hawsa takes a very clear stance against that person. It's not because it's, for example, scared of a new opinion. It's because the person who's presenting this opinion is lacking some of these credentials. And that's a sensitive point for any educational institution, right? For example, someone comes. And questions a very established fact in medicine that has so many expert views behind it. And that person is not even a doctor, doesn't have any right credentials, doesn't bring any proof, is going to raise another.
Sounds like a very familiar thing that happened recently, but I'm not gonna mention what. But yeah, it's it's really, it's like the amount of difference in opinion that you have, right? It's all accepted, it's taken, I mean, you have this concept where Ayatollah Khamenei talks about, right, that people should come and have. Um Qursiyah Azad, right, that they should speak and discuss and be be very confident expressing their opinions, but obviously with those criterias. You have to have the Takwa, you have to have the expertise. I can't sit over here and and give opinions about different things. And this is why we tell a lot of the people. Um sometimes um that go and maybe study for one or two years and then go outside to the public and express a difference of opinion, right? The the issue is, why don't you come and you ask this question, why don't you come to the Hawsa and express it? It's very unfair, right? That you claim in the name of freedom of speech, come and give um your own opinions about certain things without having these criterias. Whilst neglecting the fact that in the Hawsa, these things are discussed and you need to present it to the experts.
And in fact, what we find a lot of times, these things that what that person would call a new opinion is in fact an opinion that existed before, has been answered and. Basically brushed aside as definitely something that's not even correct. And now this person, because maybe of lack of research and having read enough books, might not realize that this is something already existing and already answered.
Exactly, and so from from back in the days, from the back, from the days of Sheikh Sadq and Sheikh Mufit, like when Sheikh Mufit comes and writes a book that. Re-analyzes the works of Sheikh Sadq, for example, these individuals are not scared of a difference of opinion, right? The difference of opinion has always been a a source of blessing, in fact, for the Hawsa, for the growth of Islam to happen. However, there are certain places for it, right? There's a, it's a gathering of Ulama together to discuss these things. There's all these conditions that uh that Sheikh Kazim mentioned, these are very, very important uh things to mind. Now, coming to what the people need to take from this.
Exactly, so now, me as a layman, what do I do in terms of all the differences of that?
The whole aspect of Mashur, right, where we talked about the um. The whole aspect of Mashur, right, where we talked about the um that which is commonly accepted.
By the experts.
By the experts, obviously, by the experts, right? Sometimes commonly expect uh accepted by others, if you find a person who comes with a different opinion. Let's say even with all the criterias, out of precaution, you still go by what the Mashuras. If I can't make a judgment, right, if I can't. I don't have the skills or the knowledge to be able to decide which one's right or which one's wrong, because I'm I'm behind the right, right? Well, behind the truth. However, um logic says that, you know, if you have, uh let's say twenty scholars today, okay? And oh across a few centuries, a few hundred scholars across and had all in one opinion. And today's one expert has come with a different opinion. Kind of logic says that, you know what, let's take the precaution side.
Let let this establish itself, let this prove itself, give it time to prove itself.
Exactly, give it time, right, things.
So we're not saying it's wrong, we're saying that, look, right now, it's 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 not a wise move to jump into this new opinion. They did prove itself and if really proves itself, in fact, it will become the mainstream opinion.
Then it's fine, we don't, just like Alhamdulillah's example, right? And we have other things as well, that in the past, there were opinions. That one person came or two people came and had difference opinion with the Mashur, right? We didn't say, oh, you guys are wrong, go away, go home. No, allow time to come. And the scholars that came afterwards, they said, okay, perhaps it's a good opinion. It became the Qua'ah Mashur after that, right? But we need to allow that process to happen. Um and so for the people, it's really to go back to this, one is the Qua'ah Mashur. And two, as the the Sheikh Kazim mentioned, to really go back to those scholars that we trust, right? At the end of the day, we we know who to trust when we when we give certain names, the likes of Atul Asistani, Atul Khamenei, Imam Khumini. Atul Jahadi, Atul Nisbah, Alamat Tabata, these are scholars that no doubt in in their taqwa, in their expertise, in. In the fact that they're uh connected to the Ahlul Bayt, right? And so we take what what they give, right? And logic says that you don't go and find other small, small people that perhaps might have something good to say.
So so linked to this, um can one not say that, look, why why have we complicated religion so much that now we're forced to go to experts? Why can't I just access the religion? You know, why do I need to depend on the experts? Was the deen not something that was uh speaking to me as a person? And therefore, it's between me and Allah, I just directly go to. Why do I need to pass through the scholars?
So this this question was even partly discussed in one of our sessions in laying the foundation. So. Uh the answer to that would be that, yes, I should even have a direct connection with the religion and sources of religion. I should be reading the Holy Quran. But my reading the Holy Quran as a layperson who does not have. Expertise, does not have these methods uh and skills that are needed to understand texts accurately.
It has to do with understanding texts.
So one of the important pursuits we have as people is uh as Muslims is to understand these scriptural sources. And these are texts and they need to be understood accurately. So, yes, I should have connection with them. And that connection is very helpful because this connection with the scriptural sources of Islam, the Quran and the Hadith. And even history, history of the Imams and other relevant parts of history. It will give me that core message of Islam that I can benefit from. So any text I refer to and I read, there is a certain core meaning that I'm absolutely sure that. This was intended by the speaker. But as soon as I move away a bit from that core meaning. I know that I lack the expertise, especially knowing this fact that understanding Quran. Being the word of Allah is is not like understanding a regular text. There's a lot of precision, there are a lot of uh. Tools that have to be used. I have no choice but to refer to experts and uh I would say that. It's a fair expectation, right, that in any field of study, I mean, why just talk about the Quran and and Islam, any field of study? For example, I'm interested in medicine. I go read a few things about medicine online, on the internet. It gives me some certainty about some core ideas in medicine, okay? And that's how much I can benefit from it.
That's the problem. These people who say this, they actually think that the Quran is that that's it about religion. They don't see religion answering all the problems. They say religion is about praying, fasting, believing in God and that's it.
Yeah.
Not realizing that religion is there to solve all of our problems and take us to that Ma'arifa of Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala.
So we have a small book that has, what, six thousand-ish verses that is supposed to give us so much knowledge. If you just read the apparent as a layperson, there is so much I'm gonna get. If the claim is that the Quran can solve all of our problems on one side, and on the other side is these verses on their apparent don't do that. That means there is definitely some depth in it that I as a layman don't access directly and therefore I'm supposed to go through.
And this is why these people, if you ask them, for example, tell me about child upbringing or tell me about psychology from the Quran, they don't have any answer.
Very basic or at least very basic answer.
Exactly, right? And because it requires an expert to go through decades of studies to understand what the Quran and the Ahlul Bayt have said about this.
And the amount of time is as well because we want to be precise, we want to make sure that this is representing Allah's views as well, right?
Exactly. So and uh I think we should see this idea of referring to experts as a blessing, not as a burden. I think sometimes this might come in the way that uh in fact the experts are there to help me, they're on my side. So I go to the Quran, I understand certain things, the core meaning, and that's very good. But there's so much more in the Quran I don't have access to. Now, there's someone who willingly has taken out time. He spent a lifetime understanding the Holy Korans. Imagine someone like Atul Ajawadi. There's a verse in the Quran, I get some meaning from it. Now, there's an expert who can give me so much more from this same verse, keeping in mind other verses of the Quran. The narrations which are under this Hadith, uh this verse of the Quran, which I won't have access to. I don't even know where to look for. The Tafsiri narrations, I have no idea. But uh out there in the books, there are, each verse has many, many narrations. So.
This is very interesting you mentioned this because uh I was discussing with a few brothers uh recently, I was I was reading a few discussions and. And they were saying, you know, um um where did the Imams do Tafsir? Do we have a Tafsir under the name of one Imam, for example, right? So this is the idea that we think that if Imams have done Tafsir of the Quran, they would have written a book, Tafsirul Quran, Anis Sadiq, for example.
Yeah, I mean, the way to see it is in the Ahadith and uh people would come ask about the question. I mean, just very, very simple, like. There's a verse in the Quran that says, Fa Liyan Dur El Insanu Illa Ta'ameh, that a person should look at his food. So this is, uh people had questions. So someone came and asked Imam Sadiq that what does this verse mean? Imam Sadiq replied that, Fa Liyan Dur Ilaa Ilmihil Ladi Mim Ma Yakhod. That he should look at his knowledge, which is the food of his soul, where is he taking it from? Amazing. So this explanation, yeah, yeah, so. Uh the explanation is there that you take knowledge from the right source, from the expert. So, yeah, this example is also related to a discussion. So I think these experts are there to help us, to give us the that insight into religion and also answer to specific issues. Many times, there are specific issues where if I see this issue, even if I see the verses of the Quran related to this. This issue, I'll be confused. I don't know how to apply it in this situation. So, I mean, just a simple example to give is that, for example, I go to a place and there's no water. For doing Wudhu. There's this person who's selling water at a very high price. Okay.
It's a hundred dollars for the bottle.
For example, like a very high price like this. So now I have a question that on one side I know that I need water to do Wudhu because Quran says. But it's also monetary harm for me.
Let's say, unless I'm a I'm a millionaire, I can afford it.
Yeah, so even even that would be another question, that it's generally it's monetary harm, but for me, it's fine. I I can, it it's not any financial difficulty for me, it's just I'm losing my money. What do I do? Can I do Tayammum? Can I just, or I have to buy? It's a question. You put both verses of. Wudhu and verses of Tayammum in front of me, I'm going to say that uh and even verses that talk about uh. Ma Jaal Alikum Fiddini Min Haraj. There's no difficulty in deen for you. La Zarrah Wa La Zirahafil Islam. There's no harm in Islam. Uh I would be confused. But you go and look, so for example, in Darasah Haraj, they would bring this topic, they would discuss, bring all the verses of the Quran. Have a discussion and that Fakhi will give you a conclusion.
About a simple uh uh action to do in my personal life. We're not talking about what you, to talk about structures and. And systems and all that, yeah.
So yeah, so that's a very important point, that the connection of the people to the Hauser is extremely important. I mean, this is the reason why we're talking about it over here, right? Reason why you brought Hauser at the end of this course, you say, look, if we want people and all of us to go back to the Ahlul Bayt, right? To be connected back to the twelfth holy Imam, this has to happen through the system.
And you beautifully showed us how, at the time of the Imam, this was actually what was happening. The people were accessing the Imams through this system of. Wukkala were scholars.
Exactly. Wukkala were scholars. And over here, they access through the Hauser. And if actually, sometimes people feel shy to access scholars. I want to say this, like. I I was looking, I mean, some somewhere back about all the books that have been written um by the request of people. So you find like amazing books, like you would never have thought so, but you find that the introduction of the book, right, he says that this person came to me. And he had a question and therefore um I came and wrote this book.
Amazing.
Okay, so then so then uh uh I'll take the side of the brothers and sisters here. And we often hear this complaint is there that, you know, I'm trying to contact the scholars, but they just don't have time for me. They don't, they don't answer my calls, they don't answer my messages.
You don't show my number by that.
So so how would you uh how would you put these two together? So on one side, the people are supposed to access the scholars, the scholars just don't have time.
Look, it's, let's put it, um um let's let's play balance, okay? Yes, I will, will you plead guilty, right? Okay, we have to be more accessible as well. Um on on one side, we have to give time and Insha Allah, we will try.
Come to a studio to be able to speak to you guys.
I mean, we will try, okay, give give, I I I will give my word and say try. But on this side as well, you have to realize that. Uh the number of scholars that we have, especially English-speaking scholars, I mean, ask the people who complained to you about this, say that how many of your children? Your elite children, right, those who get A-star grades and A-levels at your community, have you said? Uh okay, you and you and you can go into medicine and law and dentistry, how many of you said you can go to the Hauser? Right? I mean, you can't expect us to bear the 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 burden of hundreds of communities on two, three people. It doesn't, it's not fair, right? I mean, it's one thing that we need to realize, is that we need to provide to the Hauser. One of the things that people ask of I just today I got this question, today or yesterday, right? In the time of Reba, what can I do? One of the things we need to realize that there is a system by which connect to the twelfth Imam, we need to strengthen the system. And the people have to realize that they need to really play their role in strengthening the system of the Hauser. Not only just by saying good things about the Hauser, maybe giving money to the Hauser and donations, very nice, but also by providing their children for it. Right? The next generation of Ulama, where are they gonna come from?
So we don't want to send our children to the Hauser, but then we're expecting the Hauser to provide us with people, where are they gonna come from? And I guess that one of the things as well, a common um habit is that those uh youths who are not so successful in academia. They're uh sometimes sent to the Hauser and then we have expectations to have like the high-grade scholars to provide.
The Sheikh Ansari and the Atul Stanis were were are are geniuses, you can say, right?
And hardworking. I mean, sometimes it's not just having a high IQ, it's about being hardworking, serious, mature.
And and the other thing that I want to mention over here is this idea that people have that um we can kind of do Hauser for one or two years. Somewhere in the UK or somewhere in America, uh and that's it. I mean, that's not how it works, right?
I mean, that's a that's a good amount of Islamic knowledge that's useful, but it doesn't make a scholar.
Everybody goes to go through.
In fact, we would say that these two years, everyone should come because that amount of Islamic knowledge, even for my own life, I certainly need it.
But that scholarship that it will come, will come from the Hauser, basically. The Hauser is Qom, is Najaf, is this institute where. You attend the highest levels Darasah Haraj to be able to understand the Islamic presence.
Okay, so. So I'd just like to add this here that what Sheikh McDat mentioned is a very, very important thing that. Uh even historically, the scholars we see, the the narrators of Ahadiths were the scholars of that time. They came from very diverse backgrounds. It wasn't the case that it was certain families who would. Always send their children to the Hauser. Yes, we have had those distinguished families who had that. Uh line of scholars, so each generation would produce great scholars. But if you look across the board from different backgrounds, from different. Nationalities, from different cultures, the people would come. And then uh we we discuss this idea of helping the Imam. And one of the ways in which uh the communities uh across the world. Uh the English-speaking communities that can help the Imam is to send their best talent to the Hauser. And you need that uh talent, you need that a person to become an expert and then take out those gems from the Quran and Hadith. Uh it's an intellectual pursuit. So this is something which I I feel that it's it's a very important thing. And a part of it goes to the mindset of the people that uh i- it's sometimes you feel it's missing. That sending our children or as a community, even planning for it. So. Uh when it comes to secular education, you see that there's a lot of planning and which is good. So there are scholarships, there's these different fields are introduced, you have. You have career counseling that look medicines like this, engineering, all of this is, that is excellent. But you also need to do similar things. Uh in order to strengthen our presence uh as different communities in the Hauser. Hauser is open to accept people from all different backgrounds. And I'll just end with this thing that. Uh once I was doing a bit of research on this topic and I said that, let me just calculate the ratio of uh people. To scholars. Uh it's a, it's the thing they do, right? They always do this, right? Like number of doctors, yeah. I had to do that. I I couldn't resist that. So they usually do this, right? That in this country, you have these many doctors per these many people. So. Okay, so I said, let me just do it. So I did it for three places and you see the difference. I mean, numbers actually tell you that how much is the gap. So I did it for three places. One was. Uh the Devbandi or usually we call the Wahabi scholars in Pakistan. Shia Ulama in Iran, so the ratio for Iran, the number of students. And I did it, for example, the third case, because I'm speaking to this audience, was the Hoja Shia community in East Africa. Okay, so these three things. So and the the results were shocking. So the ratio that. The Devbandi scholars have in Pakistan is they have one million students for a population of two hundred million. That's a ratio of one to two hundred.
One scholar for every two hundred people.
That's the ratio. And even look at the scale, having a house of one million people run in Pakistan is not a small thing. But for some reason, they realize that in, we're not in a position to criticize them or talk about who they are. But therefore, their own reasons, they realize that we need these many people. If guidance has to happen, in their own way, they thought about this. Okay, so that's one. One is to two hundred. Come to Iran. So you just mentioned hundred thousand, okay? For a population of eighty million, okay? So you divide that, so you have one is to eight hundred. So so one scholar per eight hundred people. That's still behind what's happening in Pakistan, but still, it's it's a decent number. And I did the same ratio for this specific community. The numbers are small. And in small numbers, it's easier to send more people because you just increase the numbers by a few, the ratio goes up. So the ratio was one is to three thousand.
Wow.
So one is to two hundred, one is to eight hundred, one is to three thousand. So this is something that we all will have to take note of, that if this ratio is not there, then. Uh this is a challenge that we'll be facing, that you won't have enough scholars who have spent enough time, enough solid grounding whereby they can. Uh give that right guidance to the people. So I I would really say that it's a very important point you've brought up that. Uh a part of it is the responsibility of the communities themselves to just look into this topic and see what different things can be done.
Uh so um I guess it's it's fair to say to uh to say uh uh that uh we try our best to give time to the people. Right? Uh we put time aside from our studies and we give give time to the people to answer their questions, give time for counseling and so on. Obviously, like you mentioned um. Earlier that we have that balance, right? There's a time that you you study, let's say seventy percent of the time study, thirty percent uh in providing to the people. I guess uh for your, in your case, you're still in that side where you're you're more on the study side. So if people are, a lot of people are asking you questions. You're not able to give as much time as you would like because you're right now focusing on your studies, but Insha Allah, in the near future, Insha Allah, you'll be providing more to the society. How about your families? So how you, how how much time are you able to, like, how's basically life as as a scholar studying uh full-time? Like, you know, your kids need your your time. Are you able to give time to your kids, to your families? Uh you you know, um how much time does studying take in in your day that uh that where's the balance in there, basically?
Um so I have four children, Alhamdulillah, and um. Uh let me just go through my timetable so maybe make things easier. So I come out in the morning, sometimes I have to drop the kids to school. Um so I drive them to school. And drop them and come back and come to the office. Um so the day, a few things happen, basically. Either you have classes, normal, so you go to class. Um or you're teaching sometimes, so again, class. Um otherwise, you have Mubahasa. So Mubahasa is where students together, sit together and kind of review what they've learned in a discussion format. Um kind of challenging each other, basically, to really increase their understanding and um the level of research. Then obviously you have to study for all these classes, um study for it, prepare for the teaching and the classes you went to, you have to write summaries for it, write notes for it. Expand the research a bit more. Then obviously you have your own reading um to do, et cetera, and then you have the tabir, so people asking questions, obviously. You have to ask.
So you do put time aside for it.
You have to answer those questions and do a bit more reading, uh research, et cetera. Um then obviously have meetings as well, we we are an institute over here. Um you start to call me first for the studio, uh you have to tackle all these things. And obviously, um namas, prayers and food, et cetera. With all of that, becomes a very time-packed packed timetable. But one of the things that we really emphasize on is a balanced life, right? And we keep saying this all the time, especially about over here, um and to all the students that we need to work on our balanced life. And therefore, we try. Right? And we keep saying this all the time, especially about Alaa over here, um and to all the students that we need to work on our balanced life, and therefore we try. Um to spend a lot of time at home as well, taking care of the family, taking the kids out, so Alhamdulillah. A lot of us over here go to the park together, go to outings together with the kids. Um so we, Alhamdulillah, try our best to make sure that it's balanced, um have weekly swimming sessions, for example. Um some of us go play football on a weekly basis. We also have, um weekend, we go out, um out to the cities on Thursday, Friday, which is weekend over here. Um go outside the city to different cities where mountain climbing or play in the river, et cetera. Um so kind of balance our busy, so a normal person working back at home be nine to five or. Would commuting for example eight to six, or you can say, we might be putting more hours over here. Um but that's pretty much what we do, that's our work right over here, so our work is to study, I mean, there's so much to cover, so we're just giving you the tip of the iceberg over here. But the emphasis is on really having a balanced life, and that's something that we do ourselves and hopefully encourage others as well.
Hmm, so that's really important, that that there is that time given to the family, to the kids, to recreation, to sports, to to.
Our recreation is usually reading books, right?
Though you do have a course on on balanced life, uh I think it's on the online learning platform. Uh time management, there's one course on time management, one uh course on balanced life, and. And uh these are very in- important courses, both for uh people back home, but also for Hawsa students as well, there's a lot to learn from those. Um okay, so so um so Alhamdulillah, the the picture at least that I gather from what you've mentioned, that there's a lot to study, there's there's. Uh a huge amount of of uh variety and depth uh in Islamic studies, something really interesting. Um and at the same time, what you've just mentioned from your timetable, it's a packed timetable, there's a lot of studies, but there's a lot of balance in it as well. Uh and this gives a bit of hope for anybody who would want to come and study here. And uh normally, we have this idea that if we go to the Hawsa, it's not fun, you know, it's always you're inside your books, and. You know, there's no life outside of books, but you're giving, you talk about rivers and.
So basically, we don't talk, we don't live in bubbles, sometimes you feel, you find that people say that, oh, but people in Qom, they live in bubbles, or. You have to understand that, it's not the case. I mean, uh life over here is pretty much same as life back home, perhaps you could say that. What we do, what we count as our studies, our teaching, et cetera, is what you do back in your own work with the medicine or business, whatever. Uh and the other aspect of what of this claim that perhaps students in Qom might be living bubble is that we are unaware of what's happening back home.
And you've clearly showed to us that, no, it's not the case.
I mean, it's it's a very naive say thing to say, I mean, the awareness that students have over here of what's happening back home, yes. We don't live there back home to say, okay, uh on a date, they basically fix something, I I completely understand that, and when I go back home, one of the. Most important things that I do is sit down with people and say, okay, what do you go through challenges?
Appreciate what they're going.
Exactly, so appreciate, you can say, perhaps we don't, because we live in this, just like anybody else, basically, you would say. A medic- a medical student doesn't appreciate what I go through over here, right? So in that sense, yes, but that's that's one of the things that we do as, uh and I, but when we go back home in the summer, for example, we spend time with the people. Um appreciate what they go through as well, to really live it, but to say that not aware of what's going on, et cetera, that's not a true thing at all.
Okay, excellent. Uh Sheikh Kazim, if there's any uh anything you want to uh mention in terms of of a youth. Who might want to, for example, join this 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 movement, this aspect of serving the Imam, what would you tell him?
Okay, so um so as we just discussed, uh if we see this whole discussion in the bigger picture. All of these efforts are there to uh become a helper of the Imam. And probably, and at least I believe this personally, that. Uh this pursuit of becoming a a student of the Hawsa and studying here, learning all these amazing things. Very challenging things intellectually, uh teachings of the Ahlul Bayt in all its different aspects. Uh I can say that probably it's the best way, and I believe that this is the best way. Of helping the Imam i- in the period of Gheba. That's one thing, the second thing I would say, and again, I'm saying this as my own personal experience, that this has been a very uh. Fulfilling experience, because initially when you come, uh you have no idea, and especially at the time when I came. Uh it wasn't the case that everything I was going to face was very clear. So I was here, I was trying to slowly explore different things that are here in the Hawsa, and what it means to be a student of the Hawsa. And what are the responsibilities that are going to come later on. Uh I would say that uh at least my experience, and I would say experience of a lot of other people who are here, has been extremely fulfilling. And every step you take, every single day, you see uh different things, new. Uh things that you learn, you read, you experience, uh even in terms of when you go to Tabli, there's so much to learn, so much to. Uh interact with the people and gain from that, it's a very fulfilling experience, and. And add this last point, that given that the diverse number of topics that Hawsa today. Uh is working on, I would say that uh there's so many people with interest in these different fields, right? From economics to psychology, to uh things like philosophy, things like Quran, Hadith. Anyone who has interest in this, they would find a lot here to gain, learn and even contribute back to the people. So I would say that uh if uh you're interested in it, go for it.
So Insha Allah, we should have one day a career advice uh session where we can talk about more about the Hawsas and. And questions directly related to uh coming here, what they can do, the different prospects, the. Uh the future of somebody who comes and studies and more details about that, but Insha Allah, that's for another session, we don't. Uh make this uh too long either, we've already gone way past time. But I guess this is the first time we're opening up and talking about the Hawsa, uh especially in light of this whole movement that has started from. Uh from from the the Imams actually, so I think it was uh it was a good opportunity to discuss this. So Sheikh Mubad, Sheikh Kadim, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Uh for your contribution in this session, the previous sessions, and a big thank you to all our other teachers. Uh who contributed to the course, and a big thank you to the media team who has put a lot of effort to bring together, I mean, you guys just gave the knowledge, right? It was the whole, uh uh the rest of the of the process. Um that was involved in in producing uh the the videos and this course and so on. So uh Alhamdulillah, it's been a really interesting journey, uh we've done, I can't believe it, we've done about forty hours of content. In such a short period of time.
Each of us said that we've just covered the ice coast.
Yeah, so don't lose hope, there there's a a good amount of content, at least for for the uh people back home. Uh this is basically a a good amount of what you what you need in this topic at least. Um so Alhamdulillah, it's been a really interesting journey, a really amazing journey for myself, a lot to learn. Uh and I think the teachers themselves, whilst doing the research, got to learn a a lot as well. Obviously, the big thanks is from our our side that you contributed, you spent a lot of time, a lot of effort for this. And thank you to the brothers and sisters who uh kept up with us uh through this long journey, and Insha Allah, it was beneficial for all of you. So uh Insha Allah, we can uh have more courses like this on different topics and appear at the service of the community. Uh and fulfill the needs of the community, at least at intellectual and spiritual level, Insha Allah. So from us, and until uh next time, Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh.